Good evening. We're so glad to have you here. We welcome you to the City Council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which is located on the table outside the main entrance when you came in and at the podium rail to your left over here. Please give the card to the city clerk. Madam City Clerk sits right here. If you raise your hand, that's where you take your card to. When I call upon you, I request, or we request that you limit your comments no more than three minutes and that you avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have invocation given by one of our own, our Director of Community Development and Compliance, Mark Jordan. And following him, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be given to us by Jade. Is Ty here today? I don't see him. Are you here for Ty? Oh.
Mayor, Nathan Marshall is here from Grace Point Church.
You caused that man a heart attack over there. He thought he was gonna have to pray, you know? So, so anyway, we have a surrogate prayer tonight, so... And anyway, we're very happy to have them. But Chase Juden is the son of Assistant City Manager Ryan Juden, and he's in Troop 217, the LDS Steeple Chase Ward, and they're in the back working on the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge this evening. So I'd ask you to please rise for the prayer.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for who you are. We thank you for a beautiful day. And, Lord, I just thank you for the men and the women that are serving their community here. Father, give them discernment, give them wisdom to seek out justice and serve the community of North Las Vegas well. Lord, we love you and thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor, for coming. And we miss Ty, but you did a great job for us. Also, Chase, thank you for the wonderful job representing the Boy Scouts in the Pledge of Allegiance. This is a time, oh, this is a time set aside for the first public forum. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or anyone wanting to speak during the first public forum? Do you have any cards? Would anybody like to approach the dais right now and talk about scheduled, agendaized items? Or you can wait until your item comes up. Seeing no one come forth, we'll close the first public forum. Tonight, we have a presentation recognizing participation in the City of North Las Vegas Small Business Academy. I asked that Councilwoman Barone will make the presentation, and that after that, we're going to recognize a proclamation and honor October 3rd through 7th as 2016 Manufacturing Week in the City of North Las Vegas. And Councilwoman Wood will handle that. So we'll please go down front.
Is the thing on? I guess it is, yes. Thank you very much. Well, I want to say, thank you very much for everybody's here. This summer, we had quite an interesting new initiative that we started, something I think was long overdue, considering how many people actually showed up for our very first series here. In talking with residents of the community, it was identified that a lot of people, you know, actually, where I got the idea from, quite frankly, is from right down the street. We have one of the best economic generators in the entire valley. Yes, the Broadacre Swap Meet. Every weekend, you know, we might chuckle a little bit. Every weekend, they've got 40,000 people out there, you know? Quite frankly, if any of the local malls had 40,000 people coming through their doors, that'd be something for them to jump up and joy and celebrate. But the point being is, at the swap meet, there are literally hundreds of small entrepreneurs who, they're using the swap meet to help bolster their family income, or sometimes it might be the only income. I have a feeling, we had a feeling that many of the people who work there and also in our community would maybe like to take the next step and actually learn how to become full-time entrepreneurs rather than only on the weekends. That being said, one impediment is, a lot of people in our community, they just don't have the resources, they don't have the knowledge to get from there, from one place to another. So an idea was born. The idea, then, was to reach out and have some friends from the community who have the appropriate training, bring in our people, like we have a fantastic business license manager, Ms. Mary Alaba, right? And bring them all together and actually provide some training to people in the community, so they could actually go ahead and become entrepreneurs here in North Las Vegas. And it's gonna do two things, I think. Number one, begin to grow the personal economy of each family, so that they can have a little bit more income in their pockets. And number two, begin to grow the economy of North Las Vegas. Thanks to a lot of strong effort from the mayor, from our city manager, and the rest of our staff, and everybody here, my colleagues, we've done a really good job of attracting large businesses to North Las Vegas. So we're doing a lot of stuff on the high end, but I think what we need to do is also bring from the ground up, grassroots. And so that's what this represents. It's a, it's an initiative by the city and our friends in the community to grow the economy from the ground up. And at this time, I would like to bring forward one of my friends here from the community. I think it's gonna be mighty to help me with the recognitions, right? I'll call their names, and these are the people who actually... By the way, I don't know if we got the, did we get the picture in time? I guess we didn't get the picture in time. We had a surprise guest on our very first, actually, at our very first meeting. The mayor himself came in with his son-in-law, and he looked great in biker shorts. I don't know about the health of people who are running for president to this country, but I can vouch for the health of your mayor here. He's definitely a vigorous man, you know? He, I think he wore out his son-in-law. So at this point, I would like to recognize the very first people who got through our academy. With, you know, our academy is still a work in progress. We are gonna have other academies in the future taking what we learned and making it stronger. So please keep your eyes out when we do Academy Number Two and Number Three and so on and so forth. Let me go ahead and call the people up here. What we'll do is, if you could withhold your applause, we'll have the people come up, and then we'll take a, when we're through, we can maybe have a quick applause, take pictures, and then we'll move on. Brenda Wigu? Yeah, if you could withhold your applause. And then Fermín Ramirez? And Jorge Castillo?
Higana.
Higana? And Enrique Mosquecho? We actually had 80 people, and these are the people who actually confirmed they can make it here tonight. But we actually had 80 people. We had almost as many people are sitting here tonight. Laura Miranda? Maria Buenita Reyes? Marvin Wigu? Are they sitting down? We're gonna have them come up and... Yeah. And Mirna Wigu? It's a family affair. Cuando terminen aquí, si pueden entrar aquí una vez más para que saquemos la foto?
Foto para todos.
Sí, sí. Andrea Martinez? Is that... Maria Concepción Espinosa? Conchita, yes. Lupita Ramirez? Did you see that? Susan Herrera? And Anabel Navarro. Anabel is actually one of our trainers. She's actually working, Anabel, I forgot. What is the name of your agency? The NSBDC, Nevada Small Business Development Center. There we go. Si pueden pasar una vez aquí repito, we'll go ahead and take a group photo. Yeah. Definitely. It's with a lot of cooperation from people like you, and we're gonna incorporate her more and more into the things that we're doing here. Thank you so very much. Congratulations, everybody. Muchas gracias, y los esperamos a la próxima.
Bueno pues yo quisiera darle las gracias señor Barron por el apoyo que nos ha dado y que nos ha abierto las puertas. I would like to say thank you, Mr. Barron, because he has opened the door for us. And this is why we do this, because he gave us the chance to do what we're doing right now. And thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity.
They totally represent what it means to be a North Las Vagan, people who work hard. And hey, I have a slogan for our city. I say, "The city moves the speed of business." And I know, maybe it's not an official one, but thank you so very much. Hey, gotta admit, it sounds good, though, right?
Gina, will you come up and join me here? We have a proclamation?
Yes. Sure, absolutely. So today, we had the middle school of Jim Bridger and then Cimarron High School celebrating Manufacturing Week. And it is officially October the 7th, but, you know, we like to expand, because we're expanding our workforce. And so 300 students went throughout the valley learning about how to be educated in high-tech and new career paths. And so actually, the average salary, too, for this career path is about $77,000. So we're really encouraging kids within the community in the valley to look at new paths that they maybe wouldn't think about, especially with a lot of the large manufacturing that we have that is moving to North Las Vegas. And so with that, I'd like to just recognize the partners. LVGEA, CCSD is a huge part, so we really thank you. I want to give also a shout-out to my staff, Terry Sheridan and Bill and Donna Gamble. They also really helped pull a lot of, together a lot of the details. And I think with that, we appreciate all of the efforts, and we're looking forward to continuing Manufacturing Week and developing our future workforce. So come on down, CCSD. And then we also have Metal Span. And you know what, I should, I would be remiss to say, actually, so we had, today, the students came here, and we had them listen to Faraday Future, talk about their vehicles and the future of transportation. And then we also had the students tour Clearwater Paper. And then on Friday, they're going to Metal Span, just to give you a kind of snapshot of some of the manufacturing skills.
So this is a City of North Las Vegas proclamation. Whereas it is the policy and pleasure of the City of North Las Vegas City Council to recognize special events in the community, and whereas October 3rd through 7th, 2016, is recognized throughout the United States as Manufacturing Week, and North Las Vegas manufacturers are opening their doors to Southern Nevada students to foster interest in manufacturing careers. And whereas this event is being recognized by the career and technical education of the Clark County School District and various North Las Vegas manufacturers, including Metal Span, Clearwater Paper, and Faraday Future. And whereas our local manufacturing partners have played an integral role in the growth and development of our city as a technological leader and innovator. And whereas tours and meetings with 300 Clark County students provide an opportunity for manufacturers to teach the next generation about high-tech jobs and their impact on the economy. And whereas Manufacturing Week is a welcome opportunity to recognize the many successful manufacturing companies in our community and the benefits they bestow on North Las Vegas. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of North Las Vegas, do hereby proclaim the week of October 3rd through 7th, 2016, as Manufacturing Week.
Does that gentleman want to speak in the first? Does he want to speak in the first? Yeah, she's figuring it out. Madam City Clerk, are we ready to start with tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we are. Item one, approve City Council regular meeting agenda of October 5th, 2016 for possible action.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The apparent for item number three has requested that item be continued to November 2nd, City Council meeting. The staff recommends approval as amended.
Thank you. Council, any comments, questions on this time? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mayor, I move that we move to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. Item is approved. Councilwoman Wood, do you want to...
Absolutely. So with that motion and that vote, item three has been continued for 30 days as requested by the applicant. So unless anyone has comments that they want to make in the public forum, that item will be heard at the first meeting in November.
Thank you. Mr. Crespo will come up. I understand you have a group of friends here.
Yes, sir. I was asked to speak on behalf of...
Do you state your name for the record and turn the mic?
Wilson Crespo, 3109 Greenfire Avenue, North Las Vegas, Nevada. I was asked by the community to represent us and advise the council that the reason we ask for a continuous is we want to meet with each individual council member and explain our reasoning why we don't agree with the Jack in the Box. So that's the reason for the, for the request. So we just wanted to notify the council and mayor of our request, and we will be notifying each council member and setting up a date for a meeting with each and every one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Crespo. I think November 2nd is the do-or-die day for this program.
Yeah, we would like to meet with...
Give you enough time to do your efforts and work?
Would that be enough time? Yes.
You approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to set, if you people would like to go home now? I mean, we don't want to keep you here, you know, if you don't want... Moving on to set future public hearing dates.
Item two, set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings from the City Plan and Commission meetings.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I saw a directive, set any appropriate dates as needed.
So noted, Mayor.
Item number four?
Public hearing and ratified Teamsters Union Local 14 collective bargaining agreements for non-supervisors, supervisors, and administrative for the period of July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2018.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to make a very brief presentation on this item, please. As we always do, once we conclude the negotiation on the labor contract, we're always trying to go walk through the process and the goals and objectives as well as the results. The first slide shows the negotiation team. On the city's side, I served as the chief negotiator. Fred Horvath was designated as the chief negotiator for Teamsters. We have set the same objectives as we set for prior negotiations with other union groups. Basically, we want to negotiate mutually acceptable agreements in a reasonable timeframe and make sure that we minimize the impact to all employees. This particular contract expired on June 30th in 2016. One of our objectives is really trying to build consensus and partnership based on common goal and mutual respect. We want to seek every opportunity to improve operational efficiency and reduce the operating costs. As you know, we still have a debt projected deficit in the seven-year forecast, which is a goal that we're trying to continue to strive to reduce that deficit. And hopefully, we can bring cities' finance to a more sustainable and stable condition. Of course, the majority of the cost is labor-related cost. So for us to reach that goal is really have the focus on attain the labor cost-related recurring or non-recurring cost. We, at the time we started the negotiation, we had a tentative budget that was set. So our goal is trying to attain the cost, labor-related cost, within the tentative budget. And but also want to make our organization still competitive, because we want to retain good employees and attract good employees to work for City of North Las Vegas. We continue to explore creative solutions to reduce both the current and the future liabilities. We also want to establish a more sustainable pay schedule based on the market trend as well as comparison with other jurisdictions. So based on those objectives, we set specific goals. Each of those goals actually linked back to at least one or more of those objectives that just outlined. As we, what we said in the previous CBA negotiation, we want to try our best to curb the labor cost. One of the goals is to avoid, one of the ways we'll achieve that goal is to avoid cross-the-board increase, because that's the most substantial cost escalation that could occur on a recurring basis. One example is to eliminate cost of living for the next two years. That was the number-one goal, that, specific goal that is set, to curb the cost. Similarly, related to the cost, labor cost is really trying to reduce or stay flat on the recurring labor cost to promote workforce growth, so we can have additional positions hired to support the service demand and as well as to relieve the stress on our employees. We also want to eliminate the reoccurring cash-based sale-back programs, such as the holiday and sick leave sale-back programs that had in place in the original contract, which was put on hold during the concession negotiation for the last few years. Reduce the risk rate, the rate of risk, sick leave buyout at separation as part of the concession agreement. Sale-back rate was increased from 50% to 100%. We, our goal was trying to reduce back to the 50%, which is the common practice across the board in other jurisdictions. Related to the same goal of minimize the future liability, that is really trying to manage the leave banks. So we wanted to establish a maximum annual leave hours, maximum, and maximum hours for holiday leave banks as well as for the deep, sick leave hours at the separation, at the permanent separation. Because the requirement in the NIS for the increase, future increase of post-contribution, we wanted to implement that as part of the contract, which means employer and the employees will be sharing the increased cost in future post-contribution. So those are the specific goals that we identified. And the next few slides shows the results of this negotiation effort. We started the negotiation in late February, concluded in mid-July. Basically, during the five-month period, we had a total of 20 negotiation sessions, but many, many other conversations throughout this process. We were able to reach a tentative agreement during this time period, which achieved many of those preset goals that I outlined in our early slides at a reasonable degree with compromises that made from both parties. These are a few examples to show you as well as the audience what we're talking about. In previous slides, I mentioned we want to reduce the labor cost, either reduce or stay flat. And the outcome was that we had to increase the labor cost as a result of some of the increases negotiated, mutually agreed upon, such as merit increase, such as one-time lump-sum pay, as well as some other missing this increase in the contract. And the sick leave sale, sick leave buyout at separation, our goal was to reduce to 50%. The end result is that we reached an agreement to have a tiered system that will recognize the long-term employees for the number of years of service they worked for the city, as well as the sacrifice they made throughout the tough time. So there is a tiered system based on the number of years of service and also a cap of 130, 150 hours at the permanent separation for the employees that hired before July 1st, 2014. For those who hired after July 1st, 2014, we were able to bring back to 50% with 500 hours as the maximum. Lastly, is the insurance premium. Our goal was trying to stay flat. And the end result is we're able to agree to stay flat for the first year, but with $75 per month increase for the second year, which resulted in almost $400,000 increase for year two. So the total financial impact for this contract is for first year, which is the current year. The physical impact is $766,398. And for the second year is $2.6 million, simply because we would have an additional step that was added to the top of the pay scale. Two-thirds of the employees in this particular employee group has already reached the top step. So the increase of impact in the second year certainly is a bit alarming, but that we believe that we achieved a fair compensation... that we achieved a fair compensation level as part of the tentative agreement. The budget impact for this current year is led on the $240,000 because we anticipated some of the increase, the merit increase, to be brought back, really trying to recognize some of the employees on the low end of the pay scale, not be able to get merit increase for multiple years. Now, we're trying to bring that up so that we have, we can stay competitive. Highlights of this contract, basically, we were able to achieve no core loss for the two-year duration of this contract. We were able to agree on a new pay schedule that has additional lower steps, which represents 10% to 14% decrease, which also have one additional, new step on the top, which represents about 3%, 3.5% increase. And the new pay schedule will be effective following the council approval, the first pay period following the council approval. And the top step will be in fact July 1, 2017. There's also 1.25% one-time lump sum for all the employees, which is the two-thirds that I talked about, topped out employees that will be getting this one-time lump sum, lump sum pay within the 30 days of council approval. I mentioned about the merit increase that will be reinstituted, which will be representing about a minimum of 5% in the year one because the introduction of the new pay schedule. Those merit increases will be given the anniversary day or promotional date for employees who are not topped out. And this contract certainly represents substantial changes, both from the structures, from the structural and the language perspectives. We made our best effort trying to promote clarity and also promote the collaboration among partners in the future. We also, we were also able to establish a new process to address the reduction in force, displacement, bumping protocols to minimize potential confusion and disputes, even though we do not wish to see this to happen without having this language in the old contract. And I personally can tell you there are a lot of challenges that we had to deal with when we had to use this particular provision at the time. Were able to develop a new addendum to address some of the issues that particularly related to PD's special needs because the 24/7 operational needs at PD, we do have quite a few Teamster employees working in that department side by side with the public safety personnel. This contract basically is a fail product, in my opinion. Certainly took a lot of effort and a lot of collaboration to reach this point. We have some financial impact both in this current fiscal year and the next fiscal year and all the years after that because the recurring nature of those labor-related costs. However, we do anticipate significant long-term benefits and cost savings, most of them related to new hires because the new low, two, two lower steps that will add with the reduction and as well as the programs we're able to eliminate and the caps we're able to agree upon on this annual leave and holiday leave and sick leave. All those will significantly reduce the city's liability in the future. So in conclusion, I just want to recognize all the people that worked on this, both on the team, on the negotiation team as listed in the first slide, and as well as the people in the background supporting us to get to this point. That concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Why don't we open up public comment first and come back if any questions are heard? At this time, we'll open up public comment. Before we do, the council would like to recognize Larry Griffith in the audience. Appreciate you, Teamsters 14 and all the employees here that expect and get good service from you, and I appreciate you being here. I don't think you're coming up to speak, but I think Mr. Horvath says for you. Ms. Horvath, would you like to come up? Welcome, Fred.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Fred Horvath, 10 via Vesoni, Henderson, Nevada, 89011. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening, and I'm here to ask for your support for these new agreements. I'd like to begin by recognizing both the individuals on Teamsters Local 14's team and all the hard work from Dr. Lou and her team. It was an extended exercise, but we're pretty proud of the results and feel it was worth the time and energy that we invested. Our strategy, I think, could be categorized this way. We were interested in creating a foundation for growth. As the city recovers, as the opportunities present themselves, we wanted to have a collective bargaining agreement that incented you to provide quality jobs for the citizens of North Las Vegas, to provide the important services that are ever increasing each day as the community continues to grow. We believe both parties were successful in continuing that collaborative relationship that has gone on for over a decade. A couple highlights, they'll be somewhat repetitive to some of the things that Dr. Lou has said, but we recognized the city's interest in minimal additional cash expense in fiscal year 17, and we think we reached an agreement that recognized that with modest increases in fiscal year 18. We created a completely new compensation structure, a compensation structure that will provide immediate benefits by lower entry-level pay. But to put it in perspective, the next 100 employees that are Teamster represented employees, they will save the city $16 million over their first 12 years of employment just by the structure being changed from five steps to 12 steps and the entry-level pay. We restructured the whole sick leave benefit for both current employees and future employees, and as Dr. Lou stated, a significant benefit to the city to the tune of $15 million and the reduction of those accruals for new hires. We're pleased that we were able to create a police addenda that deals with the specifics of a seven-by-24-hour operation. It is just a different world and requires different terms and conditions. One-size-fits-all just doesn't work in that regard. We, in recognition of the request for cash constraints, there is no increase in the city's expense for medical, dental and vision in fiscal year 17 and a modest increase in fiscal year 18. And we've agreed to share increases in contributions to the public employees' retirement system as we go forward. I think it goes without saying that Larry Griffith and Teamsters Local 14 has provided some important leadership over the challenges in the last decade, particularly maybe leading and creating and being the first to accept a settlement in the litigation that needed to occur in 2013. Mayor and Council, we want you to know something. We value this relationship deeply, and we look forward to continuing to improve on that relationship and to continue to create mutually beneficial solutions to the challenges going forward. Dr. Lou, we are excited about the future, and we look forward to working with you and your management team over the term of this agreement. We're confident in the future. We think you've done some amazing things, and we are going to be an important element of that success going forward. Again, we respectfully request your support for these agreements, and thank you for your time.
Fred, thank you so much for the work you did and allowing and understanding. You and I think Larry know our budget better than we do, and to substantiate and work together and understand the situation, but ultimately to realize these jobs have so much value for the residents of North Las Vegas and the quality of employees that are already here trained and doing their job. It's exciting to have this relationship. I appreciate you, and it's good to hear you up here today, recognizing it was an arduous trip, but a valuable trip for both these associations. So I appreciate you for this. I think the council, I can speak for them, also do. So was there anybody else who would like to come up and speak on?
It's been a pleasure, thanks.
Item number, thank you, Mr. Horvath. Mr. Gubshard, Mr. Gary Gubshard.
Yeah, I have more of a question.
For your name for the record?
I'm sorry, what?
Just state your name for the record.
Gary Gubshard. Yeah, Gary Gubshard. I have more of a question because they covered a lot of ground here. So has the union given us a concession about paying employees off when they retire or when they quit? Because in the past, this has cost this city a ridiculous amount of money. When John Askagula retired from the fire department at age 50, I mean, he took home like $600,000, his most money he's ever made in his life because he had incurred all these sick days.
This is Teamsters 14, not to...
This is what?
Teamsters 14, there's a clerical and all the workers in the city outside of fire and police. I just want to let you know, there's three different contracts or four different contracts that we have, but this one is not that firefighter contract.
Yeah, that's what I figured. But I mean, does this mean they're going to make a concession about, you know, taking a smaller amount of money when they do leave the job? Because I think paying somebody 100% of their salary for not working...
This is the city manager, or the city manager asked that question?
Yes, Mayor, as we outlined in one of the slides, indicate the long-term liability, which is the buyouts. So when you leave the sick leave, holiday leave, annual leave, there's a cap, and there's also a percentage. For the new hires, for instance, the sick leave will be 50% after 500 hours. So you would not be able to cash out of thousands of hours if you work here 30 years. So in that regard, you significantly reduce the liability.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like this is a step in the right direction, but does it go far enough? Because, you know, next year, all the predictions are we're going to have a really rough economy, we're still laying people off, we're not getting any new jobs, the jobs are getting a minimum wage, and...
I would have to say, Mr. Gubshard, this is probably the most technical negotiations that took place in the city. All those things were understood that could happen. Some of the things for the last 10 years that had been happening, and different ideas that both sides had to make things better for North Las Vegas came to fruition here. This was a joint understanding that if we do hit another recession in the future, that North Las Vegas won't have to lay off that kind of amount of people again, and it will be able to weather a storm better than we did in the past.
Okay, sounds like a good idea then.
Yeah, very good. Very smart people on both sides of the table.
Unfortunately, I'm not an expert, but okay.
No, no, I could commit to that. Very smart people, both sides to understand the finances and the economics of our city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak on item number four? Seeing that, we'll close public comment. Council, any comments or questions on this collective bargaining agreement? If not, I'll take a motion to ratify Teamsters Union 14 collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say that I'm really happy, I'm very thankful for all the work, of course, that our staff did with our good friends there at the Teamsters. And they really are our friends. There's no way that our city can provide the services that it does to its residents without the, without the hard work of our Teamsters who are out there every day making it work. And I also want to point out that many of the Teamsters are also our very residents, you know, and that says a lot where our employees, they don't just work for us, they're invested members of our community. And I, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank the Teamsters for voting for this contract, for meeting us in the middle. Gary had some questions. They have, they have met us in the middle, they made this work, and it's something that's going to, not everybody gets everything they want, but everyone got something that they could live with, and frankly, that means a lot to me, and I consider it to be a fantastic thing. If no one wanted to make the, yeah, if no one wants to make the motion, I definitely will make the motion.
Councilwoman Wood, do you have something to say?
Well, I just wanted to echo Councilman Brown's comments. I think that this has taken a lot of work, both on the part of the Teamsters and on the part of city staff, but I think that the outcome was well worth the effort that was put into it. I think it achieves the goal of long-term savings for the city, which is so critical and important, but at the same time, it is also giving merit increases to our Teamsters who, I have to say, that most of them have not had raises since 2008. And these are our employees who come to work every day and do a great job, and during the recession, these are the employees who took up to 13 furlough days, unpaid furlough days, for several years to help the city get through the economic crisis. These employees remain committed to us. They put their faith in this council to get it, to get this city through it, and they've worked with us, I think probably better than just about anybody else, and I really thank them for the concessions they've made in the past and what they did here again with this contract. We would not be the city of North Las Vegas without our Teamsters. And once again, you've done right by us, and we're going to do right by you.
Thank you. Just in recognition, so you understand, we have a lot of our great city employees here this evening. North Las Vegas is on an upswing. We're moving forward. We've got two speeds, fast and faster. We're going to get out of this hole, and I'm convinced two mayors from now will never know the mess that we've all had to go through to get to this point, but we've been doing very well. But ultimately, we've been filling the straw with a lot of good things, but nothing's coming out yet because nothing's been built, nothing's been, you know, producing yet. So I'm, Mr. Griffith, to you, we need these next couple of years, you know, to get ourselves in a strong position so that we're in control, we can raise our bond rating, we can do some of the great things that North Las Vegas is capable of doing like it did in the past. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. I'd ask you to please cast your vote. Items approved. Thank you very much.
Item five, public hearing and approve the Police Supervisors Association collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018 for possible action.
Thank you, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd like to make a brief presentation on this item as well. Here, listed the negotiation team members from both sides. Again, I served as the chief negotiator for the city. Mr. Neni Kalanani served as the chief negotiator for PSA. We have the same objectives as we mentioned earlier, so I won't bore you to repeat them. The specific goals are largely similar to what I mentioned earlier, so I won't repeat them as well. The results, we started the negotiation around the same time we started negotiation on the IOFF contract with firefighters' union back in March 2015. After a few months of negotiation, were able to reach tentative agreement on 50%, half of the articles. Those are listed here on this slide. On December, on September 2, 2015, PSA board declared impasse. So basically, we have half of the articles that are outstanding at that point. Arbitration hearings were held on February 17th, 18th, and we had a lot of work in between among staff and also between attorneys on both sides, and the decision was awarded on September 16, 2016. So this is a year after, more than a year after the contract set to expire on June 30, 2015. During the, prior to the arbitrator made the final determination, we made attempt to reach agreement on as many articles as possible. So we went away paid for the mediation to occur, and we basically sat in the room for 13 hours. Were able to work through, agree on five of additional articles. So those are also listed on this slide. So the remaining eight articles were not agreeable. We had to submit for arbitrator's determination. Because the NRS requirement, I have to put those issues on the record. So the issues that we submitted to the arbitrator for determinations are article number four, association affairs. Article number six, hours of work and overtime. Article number seven, wages. Article number eight, longevity. Article number nine... wages; Article number eight, longevity; Article number nine, shift/assignment differential pay and the special assignments; Article number 12, uniform, equipment, and closing allowance; Article number 15, insurance and disability; and lastly, Article number 19, leave time. As you can see, all of those articles are monetary items, with very significant short-term and long-term physical impact to the city's finances. As I mentioned earlier, September 16, the decision was made, determination was made by the arbitrator in favor of the city's final offer, the arbitrator determined that the city's final offer be more reasonable than the PSA's final offer, based on the following facts. Number one, PSA members are well compensated and received pay increases in recent years, while other city employees did not. And number two, PSA members' pay is more than that of Metro and Henderson. Number three, there was no evidence that the city had a problem attracting or retaining sergeants and lieutenants. Number four, elements of the PSA's final offer would increase the city's costs, such as step increase, standby increase, standby pay increase, briefing pay addition, special assignments addition, and the added annual leave accrual. The last bullet point is the city's offer anticipates savings for all three years, which should prevent the city's economic challenges from getting worse, allow more time for economic recovery to take place. So, what I have read of those facts was arbitrate, actually, word by word, pretty much. So, the decision estimated total cost savings is about $603,000, which is quite significant when you're considering the number of employees we have in this group. We have 42 positions covered under this contract. Okay, just very briefly, the PSA contract highlights, no collars for three years, that started July 1, 2015, ends June 30, 2018. The wage schedule has changed from the one-step to six-step system, without the merit increase in the contract, nor additional step on the top of the scale. We're able to establish a maximum of 600 hours holiday leave, same as we were able to do with other contracts. This will be in effect July 1, 2017. The reason being that we want to give our employees adequate time to use those holiday We're able to eliminate 100% sick leave sellback buyout at separation, or, again, establish a tiered system that will allow employee to get up to 75% and the maximum of 1,000 hours for the employees hired before July 1, 2014. For employees hired after that date, they will be getting 50% up to 500 hours, which you can tell is consistent with other union groups that were able to reach agreement with. We're able to eliminate sick leave sellback program, also eliminate the longevity for employees hired after July 1, 2014. By the way, that was in the PSA's contract as part of concession reached a few years The closing allowance is reduced from the $915 to $800 semiannually. So, basically, that is a $230 savings per employee per year. We're also able to establish the same cost participation level as all the employee group for the health insurance, namely, POA and appointed confidential, their participation on the health insurance premium cost. PSA is the only group had not been paying that for all these years, until this contract put into effect. Again, the post-participation for future increases will be 50% between the city and the employees. This three-year contract, including all the changes, are retroactive to July 1, 2015, with the exception of the holiday annual maximum. As I mentioned earlier, that 600 hours cap will not be put in effect until July 1, 2017. So, basically, beyond that date, all the hours above 600 will be forfeited. Again, that is consistent with all the other contracts that were negotiated at this time. We do anticipate immediate savings, as well as future benefits, as a result of this determination, and hopefully, we'll have a better relationship, a better partnership next time negotiating with PSA. That's sincerely hope, that we don't have to drag this so long, and that end to have somebody else to determine the outcome of this negotiation process. So, that concludes my presentation. Again, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I think we'll go ahead into public comment, and then we'll come back to any questions all at the same time. This time, we're going to open the public comment on item five. Would anybody like to come forward and discuss item number five with the city council? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment council. Any comments or questions?
Sorry, there's one change I need to write into records before you vote or ask a question. As of yesterday, there was a typo that was identified, and also worked with the PSA's attorney, and I need to write into records, both parties are agreeable to make this change. Article number four, section two, last sentence, so words, "Without a departmental leave request form shall be stricken from the draft posted with agenda." So, the sentence shall now read, "Supervisors will make every effort to allow association officers the time to attend board meetings and scheduled association meetings."
And that's the amendment?
Yeah, that's, so recommendation is for your approval as amended.
Madam City Attorney, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. So, right now, we've closed the public comment. We're going to call for a motion to ratify the Police Supervisor Association Bargaining Agreement, and we'll take a motion to pass as amended or not.
Move to pass as amended.
Please cast your vote. Items approved, thank you very much. Consent agenda, moving on.
Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
May I, council members, consent agenda consists of number six through 15, recommendation is to pull.
Thank you very much. Counselor, any comments or questions on the moving forth on the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve consent.
Please cast your vote. Moving on to the business agenda.
Item 16, presentation and discussion regarding Ban the Box Initiative, as it applies to the city of North Las Vegas hiring policy.
Thank you. We are very excited to have a presentation we have in our midst, dear friend of our communities and the state legislature Assemblyman Tyrone Thompson, who will be, looks like going up to Carson City again for a special session, and every time you go up there, Assemblyman, you do good. So, I'm excited about sending you. And I noticed in the audience, Judge Natalie Tyrell is here. I don't know if you'll be associated with this, but just recognize that you're here. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Good evening, Mayor Lee and our city council. My name is Tyrone Thompson. For the record, State Assemblyman at 117 Fox Crossing Avenue, North Las Vegas, Nevada, 89084. And tonight, we want to share with you all about reentry initiatives for North Las Vegas. I just want to share briefly about my professional background. I've been in public service for over 25 years, mainly in health, human, community services, neighborhood services, types of things, really been involved with employment and training. And so, the topic that we're going to talk about today is very dear to my heart. Let's just go on to the next slide. So, what we want to talk about is the community issue around reentry, and just really keeping it real, that to give it a perspective about it, is that over 70 million adults in the United States have arrests or convictions. And then, we go a step further, that those statistics are very disproportionate, and communities of color have over to the right, that that shows that the city of North Las Vegas is not exempt. Any city that I were to talk to in this state, no one is exempt. So, just really trying to bring it home, we have a very rich and diverse community. And I do want to share with you is that, previously, being the regional homeless coordinator, is that there's not a certain look for a person with records. And that's kind of the term we use, is people with records, instead of saying ex-offenders and ex-prisoners and so on and so forth. But anyway, a homeless person doesn't look like a homeless person like we used to know back in the day. Homeless people can be any of us that are here in this audience today, because everybody looks pretty well and suited. And the same goes to show for a person with a record. They're not just people that are just lounging around on street corners and doing bad things. They may have made some, a bad decision earlier on in their life, but they're really trying to progress and do things, great things, in their community. So, at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. John Ponder. He is the executive director, he's the visionary, he's the founder of Hopeful Prisoners, and he's going to share a few things, and then I'll come back.
Welcome, Mr. Ponder. Would you mind bringing up Mr. Tu with you also?
Absolutely.
I know that he's also on the board, and he might be able to share some of his experiences too.
Sure, absolutely. For the record, John Ponder, CEO of Hopeful Prisoners, 3350 Cactus Shadow, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Wayne Tu, 7788 Willow Cove Circle, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89129.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity, council members. We thank you for the opportunity to come before you, shared a little bit about some of the things that the reentry initiatives that Hopeful Prisoners has done here in the local community, and maybe shared a little bit of the national success that we have had, that's bringing a tremendous amount of attention here to the state of Nevada. And as you know, we work with men, women, and young adults that are exiting different arenas of our judicial system. Men and women that are coming home from state or federal prison, city, county jails, drug rehab, transitional facilities and likes. And what we do is we provide those supportive services to help the individuals not only get acclimated back into workplaces, but we want to make sure there are mechanisms in place that, once they get inside the workplace, they're going to be afforded opportunities to thrive and to grow and be able to succeed. We address the needs for them to get acclimated back into their family, to make sure there are mechanisms in place to help with that family reunification piece, because that is so very, very important in that transition. And then, on the back end of the process, because it's an 18-month journey where we walk with people, we want to do everything we can to ensure that we're producing stand-up leaders in the community, with an overall goal of them never, ever, ever reoffend it again. So, we founded the organization back in 2009, and since that time, we've had the chance to work with over 1,600 men and women who have returned back into our community. And based on a research by the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, and the Wisconsin Policy and Research Institute, it has been determined that of those 1,600 individuals been through this process, an unprecedented 70% of those were successful in gaining full-time employment, and only 6% of them returned back to the system. So, that mechanism that we have in place is something that is extremely successful. So, some people ask, well, how in the world are you able to get people that are coming out of the system, 70% of them successful in gaining full-time employment? And we tell people all the time that, you know, we don't necessarily believe in job placement, we believe in job partnerships. We want to partner with the employer to let the employer know that you're not just hiring John and Jane Doe, the returning citizen, you're hiring an entire army of people that's going to be with them over the next 18 months, to help them to navigate the different challenges that they're going to be facing during that reintegration process. You know, we do what we do through strategic partnerships that we have with folks in the community, from the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department to Nevada Department of Corrections. We work very closely with parole and probation, and our awesome partnership that we have with the Workforce Connections, who is in present, present with us here today. We also partner with many employers across the valley. We work very closely with Station Casinos and Alpha Landscaping, and Westcore Companies, and Nevada Subcontracts Association. There's a local organization here in North Las Vegas by the name of Transdev, that is located here in North Las Vegas, who we have had a tremendous, tremendous success rate with those, with that particular company, and helping to get folks back into the workplace and earning a sustainable wage. And I would like to yield the floor to Lynette Patterson from Transdev, so she can talk about some of those successes.
My name is Lynette Patterson, I'm with Transdev Services. Transdev Services here in North Las Vegas, we're located at 3214 Citizens Avenue, and we actually manage the parent transportation services for the city of Las Vegas, North Las Vegas Henderson, and areas of Boulder City. You know, we started our contract here in August of 2014, and our partnership with Hopeful Prisoners at the top of the year, and I tell you that we've had tremendous success. The referrals that Hopeful Prisoner sends over to us, these folks are truly dedicated, they have went through much, much-needed training, and they're ready to work. They're committed to working, they're loyal to the process, they obtained their commercial driver's licenses, they go through all the required training, and they also, you know, they also are committed to fostering great customer service and understand our true community that we serve. One employee that we have, Christopher Ellis, which has just been astounding, I'm so glad to have known him, and also know the folks that he's also referred to us. He works in our utility group, and it's just been a pleasure to have him. I really appreciate his story. I appreciate how he's continued to be humbled by his experience, but not bitter, and continue to strive forward. And at all times, if at any way that Transdev can support Hopeful Prisoners, we definitely will, and that's demonstrated through our efforts with onboarding several of the referrals. We continue to participate in their graduations, to hear their vivid visions, and I tell you, it's very, very awesome, and we're honored to have been invited into the Hopeful Prisoners partnership. So, I'll let Christopher explain his experience with Transdev.
With Transdev?
With Transdev.
How you doing? Can you hear me? How you doing? I'm Christopher Ellis. My experience with Hopeful Prisoners has been awesome. I did 20 years in the Department of Corrections. I want to speak about Transdev too.
I know, I know.
Would you use the other microphone? It's just a little bit better, it's just important.
This is better? Okay. I was incarcerated for 20 years, and, you know, I came home with just dreams, that's all it was, was just a dream. But also, thought I knew that, you know, I'm going home to nothing, it's going to be hard out here. I can't get a job, I have this record, you know, I'm labeled as a thug, it's going to be hard. My parole officer told me, if I want a job, try Hopeful Prisoners program. I went to that program, and at first, I thought, don't nobody understand what I'm going through, because everybody in here is saying, I did two years, I did three years, and, you know, and they complaining. But a few guys stood up and said, you know, how they did 20 years, 25, and I knew then, okay, you know, they understand my pain. And so, I started going to the huddles, attending everything I can do with Hopeful Prisoners. In return, I'm just blessed, I never, ever imagined my life would be as good as it is right now. right now. I mean, my family's proud. I never heard my brother tell me he's proud of me for doing something good. I've changed my life around, you know, I don't hang with the same guys. Hopeful Prisoners is my family. Nothing but good come out this program. Transdev gave me a chance. I'm shining, man. I'm shining. And I represent, you know, my family at Hopeful Prisoners, I also represent my family at Transdev. Just thank you guys for this opportunity, thank Hopeful Prisoners, thank you, Transdev. I'm a new man. It's all because of Mr. Ponder and my Hopeful Prisoners family. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're very excited to be here in the city of North Las Vegas, and let me tell you the reason why. In 2015, Hopeful Prisoners has had the chance to work with 336 individuals, and just a little over a third, 131 of those individuals live in the city of North Las Vegas zip codes. So, to have a partnership here in the city of Las Vegas with the city of North Las Vegas, and even exploring the opportunities to have a satellite office over here in the city of North Las Vegas, is something that we're very, very, very excited about. And again, we could not have that success without the collaborating partnerships that we have with folks in the community, and looking very forward to seeing how we might be able to develop a partnership with the city of North Las Vegas.
My interest in Hopeful Prisoners began over 35 years ago when it didn't exist. My wife and I, she's a Clark County School Board trustee, over the course of our lifetime have had four former offenders live in our home. One thing we became very aware of is that, when they left our home, it was difficult for them to get back in. I also supervised ecclesiastical responsibilities at High Desert for over nine years, and my involvement there reiterated to me that we have a very difficult time helping individuals come back into normal life. And then, I found Hopeful Prisoners and decided I wanted to get involved, and I've been very impressed with how incredibly involved John has been able to get many members of the community. Metro, the court system, individuals who volunteer their time, recognizing that we have a need to help people get back on their feet. An obvious concern for me has been that municipal governments and state governments have a more strict role in not wanting to look at former offenders because of the box that is checked on an employment application. So, my hope is that we will recognize that government can help take a lead in this, instead of hoping that only private employers will do this, by having a consideration of not looking at that as a criterion for not looking at employee when positions become available. I think as you become involved and recognize what this group has done, you'll be very impressed with the impact that it is having on the lives of individuals who come out of the system. So, I would encourage your consideration of this request that we'll be making tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And so, this is actually a good segue to the next slide. What is "ban the box"? And Mr. Tu said it eloquently. When we go and apply for a job, usually what is the third or fourth question on that application? Have you ever been convicted of a felony or had any type of arrest or convictions? And so, what this is, and I want to definitely give the props to a person that I was working with prior to the legislative session in 2015, Kennedy Richardson, she's in the audience, if she can wave. She's with Workforce Connections, and I asked her, "What are some of the barriers? What, I mean, what would be something big that we really need in our community to really move the needle?" And that's where she really introduced me to "ban the box," and so, I really want to give her a lot of this credit. And so, "ban the box" is basically, it's a fair chance at hiring based on skills, ability, and merit. So, it's a first-chance opportunity for that prospective employer to get to know Tyrone, so to speak, and not look at Tyrone as the person that did some things years ago in his life. It also removes the convention history on a question on an application. And so, and also in over 150 cities and counties, they have adopted this, which I have a map that I'll show on the next slide. And then, I want to dispel the myth, because when I presented this legislation last session, people were saying that Thompson wants people to not have background checks, and that is not the case. What it's saying is that, we want the prospective employer to meet the person first, get to see if they'll be good for their work culture, see if they have the credentials that'll be a great employee, good work ethic and everything, and then, at the point where it's like, "You know what, I think I want to hire Tyrone," then, we can do that background check, and only if what their conviction was really deals with the current job that they're doing, that would be something that would exclude them from getting that job. So, I want to move on and show you this map, this is kind of microscopic, you probably can't see it that well, but I just kind of want to go over the key for this map. So, where you see the blue, those are the states that the cities have adopted "ban the box." Where you see gray, the states have mainly done "ban the box," and then, the pink is where they have the combination of the states and a lot of the municipalities. And sad to say, the white area means nothing, that we have, that has been acknowledged as a "ban the box" practice, because I've talked to many employers, and they're like, "Oh, Assemblyman, we do that." So, in order to make it a good policy, that's why we do the things that we do in the legislature. So, "ban the box" in Nevada, just want to share with you some of our initial steps. In 2015, I presented Assembly Bill 348, and basically, I've been working with the National Employment Law Project, and they are the ones that have kind of been crafting "ban the box." And they said, "Usually, when you're trying to pass legislation, the first step is to go with the state, the county, and the city municipalities before you go to that private sector world." And so, that's exactly what it states. It's very successful in the sense that it reduces reoffending, because if people are outworking, you don't have idle time. You're contributing just like everybody else. And, you know, just going way back to the theories when we used to say, people need to rehabilitate and stuff, but if we don't give them the opportunity, Christopher nailed it with what he said, "If you're not given the opportunity, you're going to continue to be labeled," I'm using his terminology, "as a thug," or just someone that's just hanging out, and people want to work. And this makes a community impact. So, again, we want to put some action to this, we don't want to just hear the testimonies, because we can hear testimonies all day long. We want to put some action to this, and so, we just want to, you know, being that, and I appreciate Mayor Lee asking us to come and present today, is just, and to put potentially some things to look at for the city of North Las Vegas, is putting a satellite office. I mean, data drives decisions, and he, Mr. Ponder just said, a third of his customers, his clients, are from the city of North Las Vegas. Where he's located, which I don't think he mentioned, is way out on Flamingo and Pecos McLeod. So, right there, that's a barrier, transportation can be a barrier. And then, adopt practices of "ban the box" would be great. I'm glad to say that, in the session in 2015, you all were at the table with me, as well as the other jurisdictions, and as well as the county, and as well as the state. And again, we're a progressive city, we have a lot of great employers coming in. We just talked about manufacturing, we talked about STEM, you just talked about a lot of arbitration things that are going on with labor. We want, we want people with records to be able to be in that mix. And so, with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Assemblyman, as always, it's a great pleasure to see you, and I know you're a tireless advocate for North Las Vegas and the community in general. So, just to reiterate, we're the first municipality to actually consider this for adoption, correct?
Not quite. Like I said, all of them, like-
No, I mean, in Nevada.
Everybody-
I mean, in Nevada.
No, I'm saying in Nevada. There's, there are other municipalities and jurisdictions that say that they do this practice, but no one is quite there yet.
But if we adopted tonight, we'll be the first one, right? Officially? Still not?
Well, we have to go through the process of putting it through the legislature, but you would be, I guess, the first partner, because of course, we always need support, and we had that support. We had like nine letters or of support, and we had a lot of testimony around it. So, yes, it would be an opportunity for North Las Vegas to make a bold statement that they support this.
I think I will most certainly be one of those people to be very happy to write a letter of support for this. Again, you pointed out that one-third of your, one-third of your clients are residents of our city. So, what we're talking about is, we're talking about our neighbors, we're talking about our family, you know.
And if I may clarify, that is just with Hopeful Prisoners. There are other programs, foundations for, for, oh, future independent tomorrow, yeah, FIT, I know it's FIT! And there's other organizations, there's a lot of things that the State Welfare Department does, so those are, but just think about it, though. He mentioned 131, if FIT has whatever, I mean, there's a group that we cannot, well, it's a decision that we have to make, you know, an elected official to an elected official, it's a decision that we have to make, if we're just going to keep looking the other way, or if we're going to really, you know, be a part of that solution-making.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Wood.
Well, I want to say that I sit, well, now I'm on the LEOS, which is the Local Elected Officials Consortium, but we oversee Workforce Connections, and I really want to thank Kennedy for doing a great job in bringing this forward. She's awesome, we love her, and we have great relations through Workforce Connections with both FIT and Hopeful Prisoners. So, I would like to say, Mr. Ponder, thank you very much. I think the satellite office is a tremendous idea for North Las Vegas residents, because you are absolutely right, Assemblyman, transportation is sometimes a huge barrier. And I can tell you, what I really would like to see is, the next time this presentation gets done, you had a lot here with Metro, and I know I'm going to hear from the North Las Vegas Police Department, "Hey, we weren't on there!" So, hopefully, that's a reach-out that you can do, and that way, hopefully, next time you give a presentation, you'll be able to show North Las Vegas as one of your collaborating partners too. So, we'll make sure that we find a contact for you over at NLVPD, and see if we can start that relationship. I think that'd be a good first start as well.
Councilwoman Brown.
Good evening, Assemblyman. I just have a question, and I just asked this in briefing yesterday as well. On your "ban the box" slide, it says, "Remove conviction history question." With that being said, and I've had probably four or five people within the last few months ask me about being denied employment, simply because something that, if they're 30, 40 now, or they made a mistake in their teen years, it's the federal report, the FBI background report, that's still showing a red flag for something that was probably a felony but was dismissed, but the word "felony" is still on there, which sends a bad message to an employer, and you're automatically denied. Is there any assistance for something like that?
Obama actually put a statement out there to the federal government about "ban the box." So, this is all the way to where the president is, all the way to where we are now. It's up to the, and you have your attorneys here to correct me if I'm wrong, it's up to the municipality on how they want to look at that felony. Yes, the felony may be sitting there, but it's up to the hiring agency to determine if the job that the person that you really want, if that conviction really is going to run you sideways on employing them or not. And it just eliminates a lot of discrimination that occurs on the front end of people applying. So, it's up to the hiring agency.
So, let me sum this up for you, just in the way I think. Tyrone, you come up to me, I'm a business owner, and right now, you have, it says, "Have you ever had a crime or felony or something?", and you have to put "yes," because if you don't, they're going to figure it out, and then you're a very dishonest person. So, what you're saying is, remove the box, go through the whole interview process, "I like this guy, I think he could fit in this position." And then, it gets to the end, and I go, "Could be right for you." Then you go, "No, wait a minute, I need to tell you something. When you look me up, if you're going to do a background check, I have had an issue earlier in my life. I went out with some guys, we stole a car 20 years ago, and I got in a little bit of trouble, but it's been a long time back, and I'm, I want you to recognize, you'll find that out about me." And that allowed a relationship to take place first, and an opportunity for a business owner to see a position and go, "I can live with that." You know, I was a kid myself. But if it was a position for handling a large amount of finances, and you had a situation where you robbed a bank or something, I could look at and say, "Well, you might be over there, but we want to keep you away from money, that's understandable." But the opportunity for the discussions, or anywhere else in your company that you might see a place for me outside of handling money, could be discussed. Is that kind of, you're looking for a discussion point?
Exactly, and just to share with you, when we've had discussions, when I was in session, we actually had law enforcement at the table, and I personally thought that law enforcement was going to say, "Hey, can you just exempt us out?" But law enforcement said, "No, keep," you explained it very well, there are certain jobs in law enforcement that, depending on what happened, people absolutely cannot. But there are a lot of other support positions that they could.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you. Is there any other questions concerning this? Seeing that Mr. Thompson did well, and I just wanted to invite Mr. Tu up, because he was the chairman and president of the Clark County Credit Union for 30 years, and had a lot of employees, and handled money, and was responsible for making loans to people, and he's very involved in his church, and that's why I wanted to invite you up, as maybe a stable person in the community that could say, you know, "We can look past that sometimes."
I think we can look past it many, many times. I think it's very difficult that we label an individual based on certain behaviors when they were 20 or 25, and they've come around 10, 15 years later, and we're still saying, "15 years ago, you made a bad mistake." And eliminating all future possibility for work, typically, in a municipal or a state setting, I met one young man my first day when I had come to Hopeful Prisoners, I was trying to be a mentor the first time, before I became a board member. And as I talked with this young man, he had had a job with an entity within the state, a municipal-type entity, agency, anyway, I won't say which one, and he had been cleared for the job, and he had even told them, "I will, you will find on my record that I had a felony when you do the investigation." They hired him, and then, when they did the investigation, they came back and said, "Well, our policy is, we can't hire you because you did have a felony." Even though it had been disclosed to him in advance, he was trained as a forensic individual, but could not get a job in his training merely because of that background check that evidenced what he had already disclosed. So, I would hope that with what Assemblyman Tyrone is doing here, that we will say, as governmental entities, we will not use a felony count as an automatic disqualifier for an interview or a possibility for a job. We're expecting private employers to do that, should we not do that as governmental entities? So, that's my plea and my hope and my involvement with Hopeful Prisoners.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor, can I just ask one-
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Wood.
So, along with that, or I guess the kind of the refer side of that is, if we want to discourage recidivism, and we don't want them to get back into trouble again, I mean, it's very hard to do that if they can't find work.
Absolutely, that is true, and John's going to be much better equipped at answering that question than I am, but I'll go with my personal experience with the individuals I've had in my home, when they had found work, that desire to get back into that is not a desire, it's almost a default when life does not work out the way they thought it could work out when they got back out and made their noble attempt to get back into society. And the more we're willing to embrace these people and recognize they are of worth and they have contributory value to society, the better they're going to feel equipped to move forward as part of our communities.
Well, and that's, I guess, I was trying to say, is, if we keep rejecting them as part, we're almost kind of pushing them back into recidivism, because if you can't get a job and you can't survive, you're almost, yeah, then when they get into trouble again, it's almost expected. So, I think this is a major obstacle in their rejoining the workforce, as you said, because if they can't even get that bond with someone that they're talking to-
And if I were to be a bit selfish, my hope would be that, when we are looking at this and we're going, "Wow, they look like they're a great candidate, but they do have this issue in their background," we could probably look and say, "What kind of programs have they had to help train them to become more productive in society?" And Hopeful Prisoners has evidenced itself as one of those organizations that really produces this, and we could say, "Wait a minute, these individuals have been through Hopeful Prisoners, they've been through another program, we can pretty well assume they have been taught and are able to buy in now to this community, society, and it's proven." If you do the UNLV study that was done, it's well-evidenced just with what Hopeful Prisoners has done, that is very successful in making this happen for the individuals who go through the program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tu. I'm sure if we looked in the audience, there's people in this audience have done things that they should have got caught in trouble for, in fact, as I say, a couple lobbyists in the room. So, I just want to let you know- So just want to let you know, there's always danger lurking. With that, we will close the PowerPoint presentation, and thank you very much for coming this evening. Mr. Thompson, thank you for bringing a timely subject to us once again, and good luck at the special session. You know, the opportunity to see special people in our audience from time to time is exciting, and I see in the audience Senator, former Senator Warren Hardy in the audience. I just want to say, Warren, nice to have you here with us. Business item number 17.
Discuss and authorize city manager to negotiate and execute an interlocal agreement to provide inmate housing between the City of North Las Vegas and the City of Las Vegas in a form approved by the city attorney's office for possible action.
Thank you. We have a presentation this evening. Madam City Clerk.
Mayor and Council, I have just a brief presentation this evening. We're gonna talk a little bit about this partnership and kind of how it came about, where we started and where we are now. This is, currently, we're looking at a partnership that includes the City of North Las Vegas, City of Las Vegas, and Lincoln County. Just a bit of background on our jail services. The City of North Las Vegas and Las Vegas entered into an interlocal for jail services in 2012. This agreement, as many of you know, had some financial and operational issues. So those were things that we knew that we needed to look at moving forward. Just this summer, the City of North Las Vegas provided notice of intent to terminate to the City of Las Vegas because of the current agreement that we had and the unsustainable nature from both the financial, as well as an operational standpoint. The City of North Las Vegas then began to really diligently explore bringing jail services back to the city. At the same time, on a parallel track, we were looking at entering into a new agreement with City of Las Vegas. These were kind of two different tracks that we were going on. We, staff really spent a lot of time looking at these, trying to make both of them better. There were a lot of changing conditions that happened at the time. For example, one event that happened was Lincoln County Commissioner contacted the mayor and said, hey, just wanted to let you know, Mayor Lee, we have, county is taking their inmates out of Lincoln County, Clark County was taking their inmates out, and so they then had an opportunity and wanted to know if it would work. That then kind of, the mayor then put Lincoln County in contact with Director Dare and myself, and then we kind of started talking with Lincoln County about what their situation was, and more importantly, how, what impact they could bring to the discussions of what we were discussing. We like to look at this entire process as kind of a three-legged stool in a way. There is a financial leg, and clearly, that's something that North Las Vegas spends a lot of time, is looking at the financial impact of different decisions. And then there's also a public safety leg, as well as a public policy leg. The financial options of this deal, so if you will, the financial leg of the stool, really kind of became clear as we started to move through the process. So one of the things that we did is we, is command staff worked very diligently, and I want to actually thank our staff for the time that they put into this. They really came to the table with several different options. Chief Perez and his team really looked at how North Las Vegas could handle bringing the jail function back. And ultimately, one of the things that was highlighted in this is it came to about, in order for the City of North Las Vegas to do jail services ourself, it was about $11.3 million. And then, we also were looking, working with the City of Las Vegas, just taking the current contract that we had with the City of Las Vegas that had been entered into in 2012, and seeing different ways that that contract could be made better. And really working that contract, trying to cure some of the different deficiencies operationally within the contract, as well as how to make it financially something that would be a better deal for the City of North Las Vegas. Something that Councilman Wood and I have discussed is that, you know, at the time that this contract was entered into with the City of Las Vegas in 2012, North Las Vegas wasn't really in a very good bargaining position, and the contract reflected that. It wasn't a contract that really, it wasn't sided very well for North Las Vegas's interests. But ultimately, when we looked at Las Vegas's contract, the cost of that contract was about $9.1 million. So there you can see from a financial standpoint, there was beginning to be a gulf that was developing between what City of North Las Vegas could provide the services for, as well as what the City of Las Vegas could provide the services for. Then when you added the other layer of Lincoln County into it, then we kind of had a bit of a third option, which is, if you take Lincoln County and connect the services that Lincoln County can provide, as well as the services that the City of Las Vegas can provide, then you start to see the contract really start to go down because of efficiencies that are built in through this kind of very unique agreement. And so from the financial options, you can see is, one of the things the staff is presenting to you today is a seven, it's about a $7 million contract to provide these services, which, as you can tell, is significantly less than what we can provide it for ourselves. And this is something that has been consistent with the practices of North Las Vegas over the last few years, is just really looking for good opportunities to save our ratepayers' money, to save the city general fund's money, and looking for different opportunities, whether that means to in-source or to outsource, or just looking at a better way to do something within the city. If you look at the public safety and the public policy legs of the stool, one of the things that we knew we needed to address in this new, in whatever we did, in a new contract, or bringing it back here, or whatever kind of permutation of that, we knew that we needed to address this concept of window time, which is the reality that happens whenever our officers that are in the field make an arrest and then have to transport that individual somewhere. That time of transportation, the time of waiting for the person to be processed, to the point where the officers can then leave, then they have to travel back to the field and actually be boots on the ground again. So one of the things that, there was a Kirtchhoff study that was done between the City of North Las Vegas and City of Las Vegas that looked specifically at the different ways that the jail service could be provided in the City of North Las Vegas. And one of the things that was identified in this is this idea of jail time. So in the contract that we've been discussing with the City of Las Vegas, there are some corrections for this, for ensuring that our officers are able to quickly return back to the field. Another thing that we were looking at is how, when you have the kind of savings that we're talking about, and remember that jail services in the City of North Las Vegas has been budgeted at $15.4 million over the last few years. So when you have a significant reduction where you're able to provide the same type service for $7 million, you start to create savings. And those savings give a unique opportunity for policymakers and for staff to reinvest those monies into public safety. It really creates sort of more of a win-win-win type scenario. So we're currently working with command staff on looking at hiring more police officers in order to create some form of a transportation service. So this is something that's very similar in larger cities. Lots of times in larger cities, you might have an officer that's a beat cop, and they actually, they're patrol, and they walk. And when they make an arrest, they are not able to, you know, walk the person down to jail, they have a transport vehicle that comes and collects the individual, takes them down and processes them. That ensures one very important thing, which is that policing public safety continues to be happening on the street. Someone's not tied up behind a windshield delivering the prisoner to be processed. And one of the interesting things is, is when you look, and I think that Councilman Brown had experienced like this when he was actually out on patrol, doing a ride-along, and I want to stress, it was a ride-along, it was voluntarily, he was out on patrol. Yes, right. And during that time, he went and experienced the time it takes for one of our officers to leave, process, return back. So what's interesting is, when we're able to work with that function of the contract, of how do we ensure that our officers spend more time on the street, this has the potential, according to the Kirtchhoff study and different things staff has looked at, of increasing police presence within the city by 10 to 20 percent, which, if you look at that from a policy standpoint, could be the equivalent of hiring 20 to 40 new police officers. If you can increase their presence instead of having them occupied behind the wheel of a vehicle transporting them. So that was something we really wanted to make sure that we addressed, and however we went about whichever contract or whichever form of service that we would look at. So those are some very important kind of ways that public safety is enhanced as we look at these options, as well as how it begins to look like good public policy, which is something that we're in the business of doing in the City of North Las Vegas. Another very important thing about the discussions that we've had with the City of Las Vegas is, it was some direction that we got early on from Mayor and Council to ensure that, you know, when you're looking at something like this, this affects people, it affects employees, it affects people that have been a part of the family for a really long time. And it's, these are not always easy decisions to make, which is why it's not just a singular leg of a stool that's just financial. If it's just a financial, they wouldn't really need us, they would just need calculators, and you plug it in, and that's what it is. But there's so many other parts to this that are important, and so one of the things that we worked with the City of Las Vegas to ensure is that all of our employees would be offered provisional offers of employment, because the City of Las Vegas is still going to need to hire individuals in order to provide this service to the City of North Las Vegas. And so that was something that was important for us to make sure that we secured, so that there was an opportunity for our employees. And that's, I don't know if there's any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Counselor, any comments or questions this time before I open a public comment? See, we'll open a public comment right now. I have a couple cards here. I have, of course, first, Mr. Michael Yarder, if you'd please come up, and then Judge Terrell, I see that you're here also for this purpose, so I'll invite you to come up after that one, after Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Michael Yarder, I'm the president of the North Las Vegas Police Officers Association. I've met with each and every one of you over this issue over the last several months. You know, it's near and dear to my heart and to my members' hearts, and, you know, I think that I absolutely know what direction we're going tonight. It's no secret, the City of Las Vegas already voted for this earlier this evening to accept the contract. I firmly believe that's the direction the council's gonna take tonight, but I owe it to my members and the citizens of North Las Vegas to speak and tell them what I believe would be in their best interest. And I know you have not voted yet, so until you do that, I don't look at it as being a formality. So with that being said, I think that signing a contract with the City of Las Vegas and Lincoln County is a mistake. I think that if you look at it purely upon the monetary issue and the savings that you receive, absolutely, if you're just looking at that, I think you should look at it, the human cost of your employees. I think that if you look at some of the individuals, you have excellent employees, you have dedicated employees, my members, that sacrificed so many things over the last several years. In fact, the public doesn't know this. It wasn't part of the slide, I understand why, but they were even willing to make sacrifices to try to bring the jail back, some to their detriment, frankly. With the actual provision in there, where they would go with the City of Las Vegas, they would actually get a pay increase due to the way that the contract would be structured. But those folks wanted to come back, they wanted to stay in North Las Vegas. Three of them actually were laid off before, when the jail closed in 2010, 2011. They made the decision to come back and have been employed for the last four or five years. I think that a lot of the things that Mr. Juden said in there are entirely accurate. I think that it will save money, but there's a human cost, there's a human price to this. I truly hope that you make the proper decision, but if you don't, my hope and prayer is, in the future, that we can get our detention center back. I think it's a vital necessity. It puts the officers on the streets for a longer period of time. It is the equivalent of hiring 40 officers, and it's something this city needs. This crime, the crime rate in this city has gone up substantially. I'm sure you guys have all seen the FBI reports that have come out. I know the chief of police has briefed you on that. This could make immediate difference. I hope and I pray that in the near future, meaning within the next two or three years, this can be back in front of you again, and we can make this happen. Okay? So I'll just leave it at that, if anybody has any questions for me. I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Juden, some of the other staff, and your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yarder. Any comments or questions? Not at this time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Natalie Terrell, do you want to come up?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Natalie Terrell, I'm currently serving as the chief judge at the North Las Vegas Justice Court. And I'm here to inform you about numerous issues involving our court that arose when the City of North Las Vegas entered into that initial contract back in 2012 with the City of Las Vegas to provide detention services. As a county court, I understand that we are not a party to that contract, but as a North Las Vegas court, we are an integral participant, and the decisions that the council made in regard to detention services deeply impact our court. There were definitely transitional pains, and I would like to acknowledge those who are here and who are not here from the North Las Vegas Police Department, who did spend time working with our court to try to work those issues out. However, there are ongoing issues, and I'd like to make you aware of these issues. If in fact you have not signed on the dotted line yet, and there's still the opportunity to negotiate, I hope that you will consider these issues that I'm gonna raise this evening. One of them is that the City of Las Vegas jail does refuse to accept bail on behalf of North Las Vegas inmates. They do accept it on behalf of City of Las Vegas inmates, but not the North Las Vegas inmates. We're obviously very concerned that the transportation from that facility, as well as from the Clark County Detention Center, is safe and secure. We're concerned, obviously, with the fact that it is a misdemeanor facility, and it will be housing the felony and gross misdemeanances. We also have been made aware that when North Las Vegas inmates are released, they are actually physically brought back in the vicinity of the closed North Las Vegas Detention Center for that release, and I don't really understand the reason for that. We, as a court, are very interested in how video appearances are gonna be handled. Right now, they're handled by North Las Vegas Corrections Officers over in that facility, and if they are no longer there, we have a lot of questions about that. One thing that we hear constantly is that visitation time for attorneys are very limited.
Ignore that.
Just a couple more things, if you'll indulge me. We are not always notified of transfers from that facility to the Clark County Detention Center, and in fact, this caused great frustration for not just the court, but also for family members, because they have a strange practice of removing folks that are going, from their computer system, who are going to be transferred over to CCDC while the bodies are still at the city. So I call it a limbo situation, because basically, this inmate is in limbo. So they go on the system, and they're being told that they're not there at the city, and obviously, they're not at the county because the body is still at the city, because there seems to be quite a big lag time. And so that's something that creates great frustrations, we get a lot of phone calls at the court about that. calls at the court about that. And I also would like to mention that we're not always, bench warrant, um, returns are not always timely informed, as well as, uh, bench warrant recalls when, when we recall a warrant, and those are actually issues that can create liability issues for the city, if someone is arrested that shouldn't be, or someone is, been picked up and is in custody and not brought to the court in a timely matter. So to wrap things up, um, I think that it's safe to say that everybody in the room was probably very hopeful, as our court was, to get the detention center back here in North Las Vegas reopened, and it's not appearing that that's gonna happen, but I really hope that you will address some of these issues, um, before you finalize, um, the contract with the city. And I want to thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Judge, you brought up some interesting things, and yes, we have not executed a contract, there is a negotiation that's going on, and I think that the notes were being taken on what you said. And this is the first we've heard from the court, so we appreciate you showing up today. Thank you very much. And I'm sure you'll get a phone call back and forth on some of these concerns, the bail, you know, and, and all the history that you can give to us. So I think we're prepared to, to answer your, or check your concerns out and see what we can do to put that in the negotiations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forth and, uh, discuss, um, this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Um, this is one of the last things that North Las Vegas has not been able to accomplish since, uh, the new council's been put in place. We have, the pools are open, the, the just, I mean, pardon me, the senior citizens stayed open, the libraries are, you know, we're slowly getting all our services back, uh, from the recession. Um, three of us weren't here at the time, and the other two went through the, the heck and the misery of what the recession did to the city. Uh, we of course, yes, want our own jail, we want to be able to, uh, to go down and see our friends and family i- in our local jail, but because of the constraints that we still continually find ourselves in, we have negotiated in the best that we could to, first off, bring it back, and that's where we started with our police and, and, uh, Mr. Yarder and everything, we were, we, we searched everything we could. We are just a little short at the moment, and we have made some serious requirements on the city of Las Vegas to fix a lot of these problems, and Dr. Lou, and, and Ryan are still in negotiations, so we will take these into advisement, and we will continue to refine a bad deal until we can make a, a, a good product back in North Las Vegas, I can promise you that. So at this time, council, um, we have an option to, opportunity to make a motion, but the motion would not be to pass, but would to negotiate, and upon a successful negotiation, execute the interlocal agreement for inmate housing, so I just, now's the time to explore that. Counselor, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Um, Mayor, yes, I just wanted to reiterate everything you're saying. Um, again, um, the income back to the city in the, in the form of, uh, all sorts of taxes, it's not what we want. Uh, we have stopped the bleeding, we managed to shore up, but we're, I, I do believe that we're not there yet. And, and I guess, um, I, I myself, I, I, I think as, uh, the assistant, uh, city manager, I'm acutely aware of, of many of these, these issues. Uh, that one night, uh, when our, our boys in blue were able to intercept a couple of, um, and actually saw about three or four crimes at once, uh, I might point, I point out, it wasn't just two cops that were out of action for, 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 uh, for two hours, it was three cops, 'cause one, uh, one of the, uh, one of the suspects was a female. So between, and we're talking about three cops who are out of action for, for three, for two hours, um, that's a, a substantial portion of, of our force. Uh, that being said, um, I'm happy that we're looking at, uh, options to, uh, return, to have, uh, boots on, on the ground. If, uh, we can, uh, still provide an essential service, which is, is of course to, uh, put , uh, suspects, you know, in, in a safe place, where quite frankly, they've been in a safe place, uh, for a, a couple of years now, notwithstanding, of course, uh, the, the comments and things that, uh, Judge Terrell has pointed out. Uh, and if, uh, in the future, we can still turn this around into a, a silver lining by having more police, actual boots on the ground, uh, I, I, I definitely think that will be a, a positive. And of course, I, I stand ready to, uh, do everything we can in the future to, of course, uh, bring our, our jail back, but in the meantime, uh, I'd like to, uh, motion to, uh, I guess authorize our city manager to, um,
Negotiate.
Negotiate this agreement.
And execute.
And negotiate and execute, and especially, of, of course, with these, uh, notes that have been, uh, brought up to, uh, the council's attention.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Churchill.
Very short, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Mike and Natalie getting up and speaking on the issue. Um, I, I can't speak for all of my, my fellow council members, but I believe we're all on the same page. We tried, very disappointing to me that we, uh, we couldn't get them back. Um, they should be here, I'm not a supporter of outsourcing, um, these people should be back, uh, under our roof, so to speak, but we can't argue, I can't argue with the numbers right now, uh, but I do appreciate, uh, what Mr. Yard has said, and of course, the points that, uh, Judge Terrell brought up. Um, we're, we're agreeing to have our city attorney and staff work on those issues now that you brought up, Natalie, and, uh, I, I'm sure that, uh, before it's all said and done, um, we'll kind of get briefed on, uh, what the outcome is on addressing those issues. Um, so unfortunately, I, I think we have but one road to go now, but I could tell you that, speaking for myself, I will work very diligently, uh, and support command staff and my colleagues to get, um, to get our, our jail back and our detention center back. Thank you.
Please cast your vote. Items approved. I remember eighteen.
Number eighteen, approve amended reallocation of community development block grant funds in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifteen cents, and authorize the city manager or her designate to enter into appropriate agreements and/or amendments of approved projects and programs as required for possible action.
Thank you. Any comments, questions on this item? If not, we'll take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
The amended allocations.
Oh, the amended allocation, yes.
Thank you very much. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item nineteen, approve interlocal agreement with Clark County and the cities of Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City for shared funding of the homeless management information system in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-six cents from the general fund for FY two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen for possible action.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, we'll take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Items approved. Oh, pardon me, I was thinking the last one.
Item twenty, approve interlocal agreement with Clark County and the cities of Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City for shared funding of the homeless census and evaluation in the amount of two thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents from the general fund for FY two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen for possible action.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty-one, approve interlocal agreement with Clark County and the cities of Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City for shared funding of inclement weather shelter in the amount of sixty-five thousand, sixty-four, six hundred forty-three dollars and forty-nine cents from the general fund for FY two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen for possible action.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty-two, authorize issuance of purchase orders in the total amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars to Ford Country, and a hundred and two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars to Advanced Vehicle Products, using the competitive bidding exception per interest, three-three-two Local Government Purchasing Act, for the purchase of eight two thousand seventeen Ford, Ford Explorer Police Interceptors, and the,
Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, okay.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty-three, approve second amendment to citywide landscaping for medians, zones, and site service agreement with Exile Landscape Development to add landscaping to four or five other locations in the city, and increase funding from three hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars to an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars for possible action.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote.
Item twenty-four, award and approve bid number one-four-nine-seven and purchase order with McCandless International Trucks for the purchase of a two thousand sixteen international seven-six-zero-zero water truck in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-two cents for the Public Works Department for public, possible action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Items approved.
Item twenty-five, adopt an industrial pretreatment program enforcement response plan to provide a framework for responding to industrial user violations as required under federal guidelines contained in a forty SFR Part 403 for possible action.
Thank you. Mr. DeValle, welcome here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, the industrial pretreatment program is part of the Clean Water Act to prevent the introduction of pollutants into the wastewater treatment plant, uh, that will interfere with the, uh, treatment process or pollute the receiving waters. As part of the, uh, pretreatment program in the Clean Water Act, we're required to have an enforcement response program that will provide the framework, uh, to respond to industrial user violations. And I'd like to just, uh, give you a little bit of highlights of the industrial enforcement response plan. Am I going in the right direction? There we go. Uh, first of all, it is required by the federal EPA. It operates around the following concepts: All violations are responded to by an informal and/or formal enforcement response. All violations meeting the definition of significant noncompliance get a formal enforcement response. As violations continue, the enforcement response will generally increase and escalate. All enforcement responses will be timely and appropriate. Am I hitting the wrong button? There we go, I got it, yes. Okay, um, there are a couple of different types of enforcement actions. The first is an administrative enforcement action, uh, that starts with an informal violation, uh, communication and meetings with the violator. Uh, next, there's a written notice of violation, then there's the potential for an administrative order, which would be the actual first formal response to the significant noncompliance violation. Uh, then there's the potential for administrative fines and a penalty order, a consent order, which is an agreement for compliance schedule, stipulated penalties, and/or a remedial action plan. Uh, the violator will have a show cause hearing, which provides an opportunity for the industrial user to show cause as to why the permit should not be suspended. Uh, there's also a, under administrative enforcement action, season assist order, which would be, uh, an order given to immediately correct an illegal discharge or to stop discharge altogether, and emergency suspension for noncompliance for anything that prevent, presents an imminent and endangerment to human health, welfare, or environment, or caused the city to violate its NPDES permit, and finally, revocation of permit. Um, if none of these administrative enforcement actions work, there are also judicial enforcement actions. Uh, the civil judicial enforcement filing is a lawsuit against the industrial user to correct violations and assess the penalties. Uh, it also provides a potential for an injunctive relief for violations of a permit, a settlement agreement can be direct, can be provided, uh, after civil actions were filed, criminal enforcement actions to prosecute an environmental violation. Uh, as far as fines and penalties and fees go, uh, there is a penalty of a hundred dollars a day for late reports and notifications, a hundred dollars per event for an incomplete report or failure to provide the appropriate signatory certification, two hundred dollars per event for failure to maintain records, and finally, five hundred dollars per day for failure to report a slug load, an accidental discharge reaching our, our treatment plant, uh, that would upset it and, or, and/or make us bypass it. Um, finally, lastly, penalty assessments. Uh, there are several different types of penalty assessments. One is a statutory maximum penalty, and that's the amount that can be levied, uh, per the Clean Water Act, which I believe is twenty-five thousand dollars per day per violation. Uh, next is a penalty assessed, um, which is an amount that the city determines is appropriate for the fine. And finally, there's a bottom line penalty, which is a minimum settlement amount that we would, uh, agree to. And there's actually a formula in the enforcement response, uh, plan that, uh, actually helps us calculate that. Uh, basically, the penalty is equal to the economic benefit that the user is getting for not following the plan, plus a punitive portion for not following the plan, plus a level of gravity of adjustment, how bad is the, uh, violation, a less litigation considerations, is it gonna cost us more to litigate it than, uh, to assess a penalty, uh, less ability to pay, we're not there to put the customer out of business, uh, and finally, less a supplemental environmental project, which gives the violator an opportunity to, uh, actually make a, and do an environmental project and spend the money, uh, on a, on an approved viol, environmental project rather than pay a fine. Uh, I would like to iterate on that, reiterate on this, that this is, uh, this enforcement response plan is flexible and is not in black and white, which is good, because it gives us the opportunity, when there is a violation, to work with the violator, uh, to make him, to assist him in trying to get his treatment processes back into, uh, into, uh, noncom, or into compliance after he's been in violation. And we've had to do that on a couple of occasions here in the last couple of years. So is there any questions?
Oh, thank you very much. So you're asking us to approve and adopt this tonight, is that what you're asking to do?
Yes, sir.
And this is what the city will live by?
Yes, sir.
And this should be sent off where the federal government or SNWA, where does this go to after us?
Um, we, we will actually forward a copy of it to the federal EPA.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item?
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote to approve and adopt. We have a motion, please cast your vote. Item is approved.
Item twenty-six, approve agreement with Clark County Water Reclamation District in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents for past sewer use fees collected by the city from Mannheim Auto Auction, sixty-six-hundred Auction Drive, APN one-two-three-dash-twenty-three-dash-one-zero-one-dash-zero-zero-two, and Ode to the Clark County Reclamation District for possible action.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty-seven, pass and adopt resolution number two-five-six-eight, authorizing submission of an application to United States Department of Commerce for funding through the Economic Development Administration's two thousand sixteen Public Works Investment Assistance Program for the Northeast Interceptor Project for Possible Action.
Thank you very much. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Items approved. Ordinances, ma'am.
There is no public comment for these items and no action will be taken by the council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where the final action will be determined and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item twenty-eight, introduce ordinance number two-seven-seven-two, amend in section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of Title XVII of the City of North Las Vegas Municipal Code by reclassifying three, three-point-four-eight-plus-or-minus acres therein, from an M-two General Industrial District to an M-one Business Park Industrial District, ZN-ten-sixteen, American Dialysis Center of North Las Vegas, for property generally located at four-one-zero-seven West Cheyenne Avenue and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Set final action for October nineteenth- nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Item twenty-nine, introduce ordinance number two-seven-seven-three, amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of Title seventeen of the City of North Las Vegas Municipal Code by reclassifying approximately ten-point-five acres therein, general commercial district, ZN-thirteen-sixteen, Northgate South, for property generally located at the southeast and southwest corners of Lamb Boulevard and Nexus Way and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Set final action for October nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Item thirty, introduce ordinance number two-seven-seven-four, amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of Title seventeen of the City of North Las Vegas Municipal Code by reclassifying approximately seventy-four-point-zero-six-plus-or-minus acres therein from a PUD, planned unit development district, to an M-two general industrial district, ZN-fourteen-sixteen Northgate South, for property generally located northwest corner and southwest corners of Lamb Boulevard and Nexus Way and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Set final action for October nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Item thirty-one, introduce ordinance number two-seven-seven-five, amending ordinance number one-three-two-two, which reclassified the property, ZN-twenty-five-nine-three, to a PUD, planned unit development district, to allow one-point-nine acres of commercial and eleven-point-six acres of residential containing ninety-six multifamily dwelling units located at the northeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and Simmons Street and by adding conditions as set forth below and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Set final action for October nineteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll give you a rest for a minute. Now, moving on to ordinance's final action.
Item thirty-two, ordinance number two-seven-six-six, an ordinance related to zoning, amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of Title seventeen of the City of North Las Vegas Municipal Code by amending the existing PUD, planned unit development district, ordinance number two-one-nine-one, to allow eighteen multifamily dwellings, ZN-zero-nine-sixteen, Fifth and Azure Townhome Apartments, for property generally located on East Azure Avenue and North Fifth Street and providing for other matters properly relating thereto, continued September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, for possible action.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
Mayor, councilmembers, if I may apologize, but I have to read in some last-minute amendments to this particular ordinance. As you recall, at the last meeting, this item was continued because applicant has requested that instead of a traditional HOA, homeowners association, to be able to allow maintenance association to maintain all the perimeter landscaping and common elements. Since that time, the applicant, such as yesterday afternoon, late yesterday afternoon, has submitted another letter asking us to consider cooperative corporation under NRS eighty-one instead of a maintenance association. And while I'm not an expert on this, the way I understand it, it's a more formal type of an agreement for the maintenance of the, the common elements that we would like to see maintained. As a result, I need to read in three amendments to the conditions that are recommended. Condition three, we would recommend that it be amended to read that all walls/fences shall be labeled and are to be maintained by the cooperative corporation. Condition twenty would read, all common elements, open space areas, and landscape areas shall be labeled and are to be maintained by the cooperative corporation. And then, condition twenty-seven, really, that's really remaining the way it is. We just simply struck the last sentence, and that condition would simply read, the applicant must apply for a vacation of public right-of-way, APN one-two-four-two-seven-five-nine-nine-zero-one-zero. And regarding those first two conditions amended, what our intent was, is since this is a development that can have up to twenty different owners, what we wanted to see is that all the common elements, all the open space elements, all the landscaping, all the perimeter walls, any other common-type walls, be maintained to the same level. We didn't want to see twenty different variations of maintenance in that. And so, therefore, by having those conditions, we believe that we'd have a consistency of maintenance in there, similar to any other type of apartment complex or condominium complex that we see in the city.
Thank you very much. Counselor, any comments or questions? If not, the Chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I just want to say that I've met with these gentlemen a couple of times, and the concept of a maintenance corporation or cooperative was, wasn't familiar, at least to myself. It's sitting in Ward Four. Matter of fact, I live up the street from it. But, you know, after discussing the, the concept, both with discussions with them and now with, with Mr. Jordan, I, I feel much more comfortable understanding exactly what the mechanisms are and how the property will be maintained. So, if there aren't any other questions by my colleagues, I would be happy to make a motion to approve this.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirty-three, pass and adopt ordinance number two-seven-seven-zero, amend chapter thirteen-point-two-four of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code to outline the powers and duties of the Director of Utilities, make various changes relative to definitions, establish a senior citizens discount program, and provide for other matters properly related thereto for possible action.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the Chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirty-four, pass and adopt ordinance number two-seven-seven-one, amend chapter thirteen-point-two-eight of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code to change the title from wastewater collection and treatment to regulation of industrial users, industrial pretreatment program, and to incorporate changes to comply with applicable state and federal laws under the Clean Water Act three-three, USC twelve-fifty-one, exec, the general pretreatment regulations for existing and new sources of pollution, forty CFR Part four oh-three, and provide for other matters properly related thereto for possible action.
Thank you. And we have a Mr. Tony DeLaPaiz. Are you used to hear Mr. DeLaPaiz? I recognize you'd like to come up and speak on this item for just a second. Please proceed.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm Tony DeLaPaiz, the General Manager of G and K Services Commercial Laundry, located at forty-six-seventy Vandenberg Drive in the City of North Las Vegas. The G and K Plant in North Las Vegas is a water-based commercial laundry, which provides services to many businesses in Las Vegas and surrounding communities. We employ a hundred and forty-five people. Well, over half of, of those people are residents of the City of North Las Vegas and have been since two thousand and six. We are here today to comment on several sections of the newly proposed wastewater ordinance twenty-seven-seventy-one. As drafted, the ordinance may present undue hardship on our plant operations due to biochemical oxygen, oxygen demand, known as BOD limits, total dissolved solids, known as TDS limits, and three, overlapping regulatory requirements from both the City of North Las Vegas Water Reclamation Facility and Clark County Water Reclamation District.
Mr. DeLaPaiz, let me ask you a question. This is a first I've seen of this. Mr. DeValle, are you aware of, has there been a conversation on this, or is this new information to you? And is there timeliness to what we're doing tonight?
Mayor, this is timely for tonight. However, this is the first I, I am aware of it. I am assuming, just in the glancing through this, that your sanitary sewer discharge goes to the Clark County-
To Clark County.
Okay.
But our permits with the City of North Las Vegas-
I can address that, but-
Which does make it a little complicated.
Can Mr. DeValle take over the mic for a second?
Sure.
I just want to try to help you along here, Mr. DeValle.
Mayor, members of council, this, the, the, the commercial laundry that he's talking about is in the City of North Las Vegas. It is permitted by North Las Vegas, by our utilities department. However, it discharges into the Clark County Water Reclamation District. We have revised, this particular ordinance actually does change and the, the actual design limits for BOD and TSS, which would be favorable. However, there's also a clause in our ordinance that says that if you discharge into the Clark County Water Reclamation District sewer system and your sewage goes to the, their potable water, or their potable treatment plant, then they have to follow their rules. Their rules are not changed, to my knowledge, at this point, so their BOD and TSS limits are going to be more stringent than what ours are.
So, what we're, what we're enacting tonight is less stringent than the county requirements? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct. We've changed our ordinance. We used to have a very similar ordinance where, I think ours was three hundred milligram per liter for BOD and two hundred for suspended solids. Now, we're doing it based on a maximum available BOD and suspended solids that our treatment plant can handle. And we will disperse permits based on that number rather than a fixed number. The fixed number is very difficult because, you know, it's, again, black and white. You, you either have to meet it or you have to do some, some different standards and some additional pretreatment. We would be happy to work with the laundry, to talk to the county, to see what options you may have available. However, it will be beyond our control to, as to them meeting the county requirements. They will still have to meet those.
So, I guess I'm a little confused. He's been discharging to Clark County since two thousand and six, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So, has he not had to meet the requirements of Clark County since he began discharging?
You do have to meet those requirements.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm thinking maybe I may be able to help. With respect to, to this particular ordinance change, we're just codifying what's in the federal law and the federal regulations. If Clark County has adopted something that's stricter, I mean, that, that's up to Clark County, and I'm sure that staff can help to assist this business owner to make sure that they're in compliance. But as far as the item that's in front of you tonight is to codify the federal standards.
Okay. So, let me ask Mr. DeValle a question. That makes a lot of sense to me, and I understand your situation. Why is it so timely? Just curious at this moment, is there not a two-week period that we could at least hear the, something, or?
As far as this ordinance goes and Mr. DeLaPaiz's arguments, you know, he, his, his argument is, although the permit is with us, he has to maintain the county parameters.
Okay.
The county parameters, we are adopting them in this ordinance, but we have no choice in being able to do that. We would be happy to work with him and the county to see what can be done about his permit and whether or not his BOD and TSS limits can be increased. We've had this issue with other laundries in the city, and, because it is hard to meet those limits. But, but I would also tell you that as far as a, a parameter for, under industrial pretreatment, BOD and total suspended solids are not part of that. We've, we've adopted ours, but we've increased it so that we can maintain control of our treatment plant for the, as our flows increase. The county, you know, they have a fixed number in their ordinance, and that is, I believe, two hundred milligram per liter.
I don't know, because we, all our communications through the city.
So, my, so if we, if we pass this tonight, how will they be negatively affected if we pass this tonight? Because I understand you're trying to get it to the city. Would you answer that question, I guess, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, the city is not requiring anything. I mean, you would be potentially negatively affected if the city was passing something maybe higher than what Clark County. We're actually, our requirements are just exactly what federal law and federal regulations are. So, again, we've had success with, in these sort of situations where the, you know, we have, they have to deal with both the city and the county, and Randy can, can reach out to his counterpart and then try to help you to resolve the situation. But I'm, in this particular situation, if Mr. Mayor, members of council, that we have outside reasons for wanting to keep this on to pass, we need to move forward and we have to make sure that our ordinances are always in compliance with federal law and regulations. And so, I'm going to urge you to please-
Okay, I get that.
-pass that, because we can, we can work this issue outside.
I can also assure you that passage of this ordinance will not impact or hurt the commercial laundry's permit. We will continue to work with them to work, to, to see what can be done with the county and their ordinance. But we, they do have to follow the county ordinance.
If I may add a brief comment. This item was introduced two weeks ago as an ordinance. And additionally, if I understand correctly, the business has to follow the standards at this Clark County before this ordinance is introduced.
Our question is, is how do we comply with both the city and Clark County?
I think-
This is very, this has been an extremely confusing situation. We've actually hired consultants to try and get the two entities together to see if we could find a clear path forward, and we haven't been able to get anywhere. So, what we're asking is that you don't pass this thing tonight until we have an opportunity to get the parties together, that maybe we can get a recommendation from you guys that, you know what, we need to sit down and talk about this-
Right, I get your-
-before anything is passed.
I get your point. We're more apt to probably pass this and tell you, you're going to get that, you're going to get that judicial opportunity to discuss with the county anyway. We're not trying to hurt our, our businesses today. And what we do today is, is less than what the county's offering. And so-
If you'll allow me, Mr. DeLaPaiz, even if we, we pass this, it's not going to negatively impact you, because, again, as you say, your premise with our city, we don't have, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam City Attorney, their premise is still going to be good with us, with the city.
Yes, and, and the city manager made a good point, which is, whether this goes forward or not tonight, they would have had to meet the county standards since two thousand and six. So, this doesn't affect those standards. So, it shouldn't, I understand-
We don't know what those standards are.
So, here's what we're going to do-
And we can discuss that separately, but that sort of doesn't-
Right, we're going to, we're going to call for motion, run it to the other, and then hopefully, you're going to go over the sidebar and set up a meeting, meet with our people, and get with Tom and Wigan at the county, and set up a meeting. They're our sister city, county, and you're our customer. So, you're not just, we're going to go fight for you too, okay?
And I, they're in my ward, and I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to dedicate whatever time I need to, to make sure that you and your employees are going to be able to continue to function as far as that, you know, to the, to the best ability of our city. So, we're, we're on your side. We don't want, we don't want to harm you. We will do nothing here that, that would possibly harm you.
Well, if, if we're forced to pretreat the water and then, and then treat it again before the discharge, that, that could be, that could have significant implications on our business.
If you don't get some kind of success in your conversations, you can come back to the council again.
Are we considered an Ellis Industrial Park?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we have an interlocal with the county for our Ellis Industrial Park pretreatment, which, which follows the guidelines. We actually submit the self-monitoring reports and our reports, and we go out and do our monitoring for this business, to the county. Have you been, have been advised by anybody that you're in violation?
Well, we've never had a violation, but the, the BOD and the TDS limits are-
The BOD, the BOD-
Unreachable. And that's what we're asking, that the, those limits need, they're incredibly low for our industry.
I agree.
And for any city where we have wastewater, where we run laundry plants and have wastewater permits.
Mr.-
More of what we were asking is for that to be-
Sorry. I just dropped it.
Mr. Mayor, the BOD and TSS is part of the interlocal agreement with the county. However, it is something that the county general manager, as I do, as utilities director in North Las Vegas, has the discretion to change. So, I would like to work with this customer and meet with the sewer district in order to- customer and meet with the sewer district in order to find out what his options are.
Would you report-
Because you're not the only, this, this person is not the only, this company is not the only company that faces this. As I mentioned, you know, we have several commercial laundries in North Las Vegas. Most of them seem to be bundled up around Nellis Industrial Park, and they all have the same problem with the BOD and TSS.
We're going to put, we're going to board on this night one way or the other, but would you report back to the city council what has happened for Mr. De La Paz and those business owners? Because they are our business partners.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Barone would like to participate and be there with you to support you and fight for you. So, council, any more comments or questions, or anybody else would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, chair, I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Thank you very much. Items approved. Moving on to the city manager report. Dr. Drew, do you have anything else to report? Because it's been a long-
Yes, actually, I have a couple of comments that I had to defer to the end, in the interest of keeping the flow of the presentation going. I really like to probably thank Cass Palmer for his effort and assistance in the PSA negotiation. As you recall, he had to take over when I was on vacation, and you also know that my patient, I have very many patients when we don't make progress, spend a lot of time on something. So, Cass spent countless hours meeting with PSA, trying to reach some consensus, and he was able to do so on several of those articles. I really want to thank him. And secondly, the, on the jail, the effort that we made is tremendous. And we've been on this for more than a year. If you recall, the study, joint study with City of Las Vegas, and a lot of efforts were made by our staff, especially from PD. And I want to recognize Chief Perez, Assistant Chief Knoll, and Captain Campbell for their efforts, as well as Mike Yoder from PRA, for their effort to come up with the best plan we can, we can provide service in-house. And Director Dale and Assistant City Manager Juden also need to be recognized for their, their effort. It is a not easy decision, but everybody knows the goal, put the city's best interests at first, and really work towards that common goal. That's how we got to where we are today. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate your leadership and for having such a good staff that you work so well with. At this time, that's the end of the city manager's report. Next is council, items. Council, do you have anything you would like to report?
I have one.
Um, I'd just like to invite city, North Las Vegas, Las Vegas, anywhere in Nevada to the fifth annual Reading Rainbow in the Park event. It's going to be held this Saturday from 11 to 3 at Valley View Park, which is 2000 Bennett Street. This year, like I say every year, it keeps growing and growing and growing. We're going to have some amazing clowns there, some character book readings. Kevin Janison will be reading from his deputy Dorkface series, and then we also have a food truck there from Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf to give away coffees, coffee and chocolate products. The cost is free. Lunch will be provided, and every child from zero to 100 can take as many books from this event as their hands can hold. So, I hope to see you Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Any kind of chocolate you'd like, Councilman Churchill?
Councilwoman Wood.
I just wanted to let the council know that I had been asked to attend a meeting on behalf of the city of North Las Vegas, and it turned out that meeting was with representatives from across the valley and in regards to our safe key program. And there is some concern about, as there are all these changes that are happening with the Clark County School District, and this is a joint program that we run with them, what the impact may be as these changes come about with the school district, and will that have an impact on our safe key program. So, I just want to alert you that I'm going to be looking into that and talking to some of our elected officials, if any of you are interested.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barone?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate, just a couple of things. I do believe that this October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, is it not?
It is.
So, I would like to invite my colleagues here. For, for me, breast cancer is something that hits literally home. My wife is a survivor, and so I know that I will definitely be wearing my pink tie in our next council meeting, and also the fire department gave me a, a nice little button. It's a pink, pink fire, so I, I invite as many of my colleagues and hopefully staff, anyone else who comes at our next meeting, to please also join us for that. Just a couple of more, a quick things as well. On Monday, we'll be getting a visit from the mayor of Merida, Yucatan, the state, the Mexican state of Yucatan. The mayor, Mayor, the Honorable Mauricio Dolan will be here in town, visiting me at Rancho High School of all places, and I think he's going to maybe swing by here and maybe have Nancy guiding around. We're, we're discussing the possibilities in the future of possibly having a sister city relationship, which is a big deal, you know, with such a prosperous city there in, in the heart of the, of a historic part of, of our world here. And to that end, we're also having the Second Annual Mayan Fashion Show at Rancho High School, where some artisans are bringing some award-winning costumes. We actually had them at, the same people, Forrest hosted them last year at our, at our, one of our fantastic libraries at the, which library was it? It was the Alexander Library, yes, you know, and it was quite a showstopper. And so, they'll be at Rancho High School on Monday. If you have, have a chance, please come on by. You can be my guest there at lunch while we run them down our own runway there. And on top of that, speaking of Mayan things, we're, I'm looking at being the, the main sponsor for a Mayan soccer tournament to be, that we tentatively have scheduled for October 29th and 30th at Tropical Breeze Park. A couple of soccer teams from, from the Yucatan are going to come by and challenge some of our local teams, and that should be a, a sight to, to, to hold, to behold. That's how we're celebrating Hispanic Recognition Month here in the beautiful city of North Las Vegas. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Churchill?
I just wanted to, to echo Mayor Protem, that next council meeting, I'll wear my, my pink, and hopefully, do you have some contacts in the fire department that you can get us a pin to?
The acting chief? Chief, you think you, you might be able to rustle up a few more of those, those pins?
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, and I know you do. I was only kidding. Thank you. No, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. And I just got a couple of things. One is, this weekend, we had a police event that was kind of get out and meet the neighbors and have a great time, and a lot of the community came together. Officer Patty's in the back, back there. We had about 20 pro basketball players who had just retired recently, or have had, Spencer Hayward was there. He was the oldest basketball player. But we had a great basketball game at Rancho High School, and it was a very exciting event. And we can thank Tim and Michelle Bedwell for putting that thing together, and we're hoping every year that that basketball event becomes bigger and bigger. And it was a lot of fun. I actually, Alex, or council, Police Chief Alex Perez and I got to go out and kind of get ready and throw the ball up in the air, and, you know, the jump ball and stuff. So, we really had a good time. And I want to thank the police department for putting 100% into that. Our residents loved it. It was a great experience, and we sure have a great police department.
We can thank Lieutenant Bedwell and his wife for being the, they were the main people to put it forward, right?
They did. And then I-
And if it happens in North Las Vegas, it happens at Rancho High School.
And then I have a sad thing. Chief Kessler's here tonight. We have a fire sergeant, I mean, a fire chief, assistant fire chief, is that what this title is, Ray? Would you come up for a second? This is kind of personal to the city. And while he's coming up, I'll let you know, on Saturday, I was able to go to the St. Christopher's Bazaar, and Father Dave was there, and they had a great experience over there at St. Christopher's. And it's just fun to be in North Las Vegas on the weekends. But we do have a serious note here with Chief Kessler.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council. It's with a heavy heart. We, Fire Captain Yaphet Miller had a cardiac arrest after a fire last week, and unfortunately, he's not doing very well, and prognosis is pretty grim for him. So, keep him in your prayers, his family in your prayers, and our, our whole city family in your prayers.
Thank you very much, Ray. I understand you and I were going to go visit, but the family's asked that we just kind of let them have some time at the hospice with their, their dear father and brother, and, you know, and their relations there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Still.
Yeah, we appreciate the offer very much. The, the family's trying to cope with this unexpected tragedy, and they would like some privacy and just to spend some, some time with Captain Miller.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming up, Ray. I'm almost scared to say that this is a time set aside for the second public forum. I see a lot of people in the back row still. So, we're going to open up our, our final public forum. Madam City Clerk, I have a few blue cards here, and I will call you up, and I think we're here for one issue, maybe. Mr. Arnold Alvaro, is that you, sir? Mr. Al, I'm going to say this wrong as you told me.
My name is Arnoldo Alvarez. I live at 2546 Ellis. I have a problem with kids playing on the streets. Most of the time, the police help me, but the last time I came by, I, I called them, they said they will not help me anymore. They bang a soccer ball on my brand-new car several times. They bounce it on the wall. I got triple-sided windows, and the children believe that they own the street, because at times, I make a right turn to, to my home, and there's cars parked on both, all, all the way up to the corner, so I don't see them. And they will not move when, when they are playing their game. They'll finish their game, and then they, they'll, they'll move in. Last year, they, they had the guts to put a sofa on my parking lot while I was going to drop my daughter to work. I came back, and there it was. And this is a continuing problem. Most of the time, the police help me, except the last time, they said that the children had the right to play on the streets. Now, this does not jive with the, the idea of pedestrian safety or jaywalking. The amount of people that are dying on the streets is big, big. And there's no, there's no turning around on that one. The children should be, the city spends maybe 100, 100 million dollars on a park, on Craig, and they will not use them. Three, three blocks away from my house, there's Justin Park. Boys Club is right next to it. So, there is no reason for children to play on the streets. Now, am I the only one with this problem? That's my question.
Mr. Alvarez, I don't know, this is your first I've heard of it, but I will tell you in the back corner, Chief Perez and Aaron Patty-
Ellis and Harrow, right that corner.
Yeah, would you, the police officer-
And Boys Club is right next to it, and Justin Park is right next. You have a beautiful area of grass in here, and mine is cement. Soccer ploy, they, they fall on the cement, they, they scrape it.
There's, would you raise your hand, Alex, or Aaron? You have some police officers right there that want to, want to speak with you and work with you, okay? And the councilman right here is at your disposal.
I, I tried to get, to get an appointment to him and explain my problem, because I, numerous times, I called, the, the last policeman that came by got more on their side than my side, and I, my brand-new car, I had three brand-new cars before that, and two Focus, one Fiesta, and I had a bad accident last year, because I was smashed between two SUVs, and I got real, the Fiesta real quick, because the bag would not open, and the bell did not hold me. So, I, I have a brand-new Nissan, and it's supposed to warn me with a back camera, so I wouldn't go get hit from the back, but-
I recognize what you're saying.
Soccer, soccer ball hits it, that's a thousand bucks.
Would you, would you step to the back over there and meet with the officer? That's his job to, to support the council.
Thank you. I hope I can come up with a good solution.
Yeah, and Mr. Alvarez, just real fast, I, I did call you back, but I guess I talked to your daughter, and I don't know, I'm, I'm so sorry they weren't able to-
I received a message, and I, I went up there and told you, and you told me about this meeting, or somebody.
Yeah, probably Nancy. But, but, yeah, our, our police officers will, will assist you, and I'm going to leave you my card as well, so anything you need.
I've been here 20 years, I never had any problems with them.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Bouchard?
Okay, about eight months ago, I found out we were going to get a sign in front of Craig Ranch Road. I was all excited about it, because the, the park needs a way to let people know what's happening in the park, what's happening at the amphitheater, what's going to happen when we get our petting zoo, which I'm really excited about. And the sign now is, is being used as an advertising board. How did that happen?
What, what's going on with that sign? Mr. Cass Palmer's right over there, who's, I know, a friend of yours.
Well, actually, that was a rhetorical question. I don't want to waste three minutes. I got, I got two other things covered, but I mean, it's not right, needs to be fixed. We need a sign to promote the park and to develop, you know, get people into the park. We had a great festival just two weeks ago with the San Tany Food Festival, wonderful thing, type of thing. We want in this town, family-friendly, inexpensive. We want those people to come back. They weren't even on that sign, so that-
The San General Peace was, was before that sign was lit up, but don't worry about it. You understand there's-
By the way, the sign, it's at the top, it says City of North Las Vegas, it doesn't even light up at night. Signs are supposed to light up. I used to be in the sign business. Okay, moving along. You know, for 15 years, I've been complaining about all the hopscotch development and the garbage they attract and the crap, and I don't expect the city to be paying to clean these areas up. I expect the landowners to be doing that. I've been told by Nita Woods, our Assistant City Manager, there's a state statute that keeps us from doing that. I called the State of Nevada. They don't know about the statute. I've called the city attorney eight times, emailed her, nobody's getting back with me. So, apparently, there is no statute, because nobody knows what statute it is, and that's, you know, I'm tired of wasting my time if you people aren't going to work with me. I'm trying to clean up the city, make the city a more attractive place. These people don't want to clean up the city that they work for, well, then there's something wrong with them. We need to straighten this out. Okay, one more issue. Last year, I, I brought up the issue of using the police department for these Halloween things. Our police department is the most valuable asset this city has. Our police department is also the most expensive asset we have, and by their own admission, we are short of officers. It's too expensive to put $125 an hour of people giving out penny candy. And the place to do it is not in a crowded parking lot. The place to do it, the safest place, is down at Craig Ranch Road. So, I have to say, I got everything done within three minutes. But in closing, I would like to get a phone call from somebody that can tell me that statute, the state statute, that's keeping us from making landowners bring up, clean their properties up so they're not a source.
Great, we'll find that out. And I served in the legislature for 14 years.
Great, thank you so much. Have a wonderful weekend.
I'll find that out, too. Thank you very much. And honestly, I, if we can't find it, I'll research it through the LCB. Legislature Council Bureau. Thank you. We have Cynthia Miyamoto. Miss Cynthia, are you here? Thank you, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and North Las Vegas City Council members. My name is Cynthia Miyamoto, co-founder of Urban Underdogs. Through our work in the rest of the Las Vegas Valley, I have personally witnessed the positive impact the Return to Field Program has had, both the community cats and the residents that care about them. I am truly impressed with the partnership between Best Friends Animal Society and the Animal Foundation. It makes me happy to see cats be returned back to their outdoor homes, rather than sitting fearful, panic-stricken, and in risk of euthanasia in a shelter. Through this positive, through this partnership, excuse me, positive things are happening. To summarize the long-term nature of our advocacy work, there's an expression used in animal welfare field. This is a marathon and not a sprint. However, if you're a stray cat in North Las Vegas, sitting in a kennel in the shelter, it is just that, a sprint, a sprint for your life. However, there is an alternative. So, I ask you to please approve the proposed pilot program without further delay. Mayor Lee and members of North Las Vegas Council, thank you for your time and this platform, and for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Cynthia, just for your information, I want you to know you have some very- Thank you. Cynthia, just for your information, I want you to know you have some very, very engaged people on this board that have been working on that issue. And even as of today, I think, was that city attorney? There was a, well, Mr. Churchill, would you answer that? I know that we don't want to go into a public comment period and turn it into an ordinance here, but-
I would be more than happy to come in the back after the council meeting and kind of bring you up to date or in the lobby.
Okay.
And if our city attorney, Bethany Sanchez, wants to come out there with me, that'll be fine. Because we did have, lack of a better word, a roundtable meeting today that I thought went very well. So be more than happy to explain to all of you.
Perfect. We'd really appreciate it.
And I think, Ms. Woods, if you're interested, it's up to you. But she's, you have some great friends here that are concerned with this. Ms. Hurley, is there Mrs. Hurley there? Yes, ma'am. Are all these on the same issue? Because we can handle these just out there as a group with your 20 or 30 people, along with our support from our councilman and our city attorney. Because we did have an hour and a half meeting today, and you can be brought up to speed on what was discussed. You can say something if you want, but we might have new information for you. That's awesome.
I'm sure you're going to do that, and I'm just going to say what I have to say very quickly, okay? And thank you for this opportunity to speak, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Strut Hurley, and I'm with Urban Underdogs as well. And we work with, we're a nonprofit animal welfare group, so we work with different organizations in town. And we're based in Las Vegas. I'm also a resident here, and I've lived here for over 24 years. So Urban Underdogs, we provide assistance to the disadvantaged members of our community and animals in their care. We support, obviously, that's what we're here for. We support the pilot Return to Field Program being proposed today as this program will not only save the lives of many community cats, but also preserve the bond that the community members have with the cats and with one another. With this considerable benefits in mind, I encourage you to implement the pilot program as soon as possible. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I did have a call from Ms. Carley that works for Animal Foundation. And Chris called me on this too, Robinson. So this has been a topic of, I mean, a discussion here. Holly Seismore of the Best Friends Animal Society, Canab, Utah.
Oh, fan of Canab, wow.
Well, my cousin lives in Canab, Utah.
Love Canab.
Actually, Fredonia, to tell you the truth, but it's together.
Like Fredonia too. I'm Holly Seismore. I'm the Chief National Programs Officer for Best Friends Animal Society in Canab, Utah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council, for your consideration of this proposed Community Cat Return to Field Pilot Program, brought to you in July by Best Friends and the Animal Foundation. I'm here tonight representing the interests of Best Friends on this issue as the organization that runs more types of these kinds of programs across the U.S. than any other organization. And I do want to thank the city staff for sitting down with us today. I do feel that some progress was made, and yet we remain anxious for action. I'd like to reiterate per our memo to the council and mayor in July that this program complements efforts already happening in North Las Vegas. And we do not believe it conflicts with your current ordinances. Las Vegas City and Clark County had the same feral cat ordinance in place as you currently do when they implemented similar pilots, pilots that were so successful. The program has been expanded in those jurisdictions. I'd like to also say this program is not only about saving lives, although that is one very positive consequence. For instance, cat euthanasia has gone down in Las Vegas City and Clark County by 54 and 62%, respectively. That's January through September 2016 compared to that same period last year. In contrast, during that same timeframe, cat euthanasia decreased in North Las Vegas by only 7%. And this program does so much more than saves lives. It humanely reduces cat populations effectively and efficiently. It helps mitigate nuisance behaviors by cats in many ways, one of which is that this program will provide free humane cat deterrence. I often say whether you love or loathe cats, this program can help you. Residents have called us angels, a godsend. Their gratitude for helping them help the cats they love is so rewarding. Lastly, I simply want to respectfully implore you to take action quickly. Our colleagues are not going to speak anymore tonight in respect of your time. But since we brought this to you in July, we've deemed about 90 cats, we think, that could have been eligible for this program that have been euthanized at the shelter. In their honor, the concerned citizens who are with me today are here tonight to share those faces with you. Thank you for tackling all the important issues you do. Thank you for tackling this one urgently.
Thank you, Ms. Seismore, for coming all that way here. So just for your permission, Ms. Seismore, I like cats too. And I had a cat when I was young. His name's JoJo. And we've had subsequently 20 cats named JoJo in our family. It's the only name we have, so. Every cat's named JoJo. So, and Mr. or Mrs. Wannamaker, Jackie Wannamaker? Oh, thank you so much. That's kind of you. So anyway, is there anybody else that would like to address the city council at this time? Please come forward, Steve, Mr. Schoes.
Good evening. My name is Steve Schoe. I live at 5622 Midnight Breeze Street, North Las Vegas, 8901. I had the pleasure of working for the City of North Las Vegas. The Police Department is a crossing guard. I have since been hired by A C M S. I see the mayor occasionally on Ann Road. The reason I'm here is they're not manning all the corners. The school that I work with has, supposed to have five crossing guards, there's three of us. And one of them is a supervisor because they can't keep, or they just can't hire anybody, or they're not hiring anybody. The 96 number was originally thrown out as the amount of crossing guards that were needed in North Las Vegas. Had you spoken to your traffic engineer, you would know that the number was 112. I also work at another school, Elizondo Elementary School, because they don't have enough crossing guards. And I'm not the only one that has to work multiple corners. So I'm asking, I don't know if anybody's even gone out and checked to see if they're doing an effective job, if all the corners are manned. But I'm asking you to do that because just the little area that I work in is missing four guards.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, I know you handle contracts, and I know the Police Department's in the back. And maybe there is something that's happening. We don't know about. We're advised by what you say.
And I appreciate that. I have one other thing I'd like to speak about. When we work for the City of North Las Vegas, we've got two pair of pants, a couple shirts. We've got heavy coats, we've got gloves, we had hats, we had lanyards, we had raincoats, we had rain gear. What else? We had the reflective vest. With this company, we got a reflective vest and a whistle and a sign. I'm just wondering now if we're supposed to go out, us guards, at making this big 9:25 an hour, go out and spend $100 for a heavy coat, or another $100 for heavy rain gear and galoshes, gloves? I mean, I'm wondering if your contract requires them to supply us with the equipment that we had when we worked for the City of North Las Vegas.
Great. And they're consulting on that right now. So your questions will be answered.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we do appreciate your service out there. You do a fine job.
All of us only do it for the kids. We're all North Las Vegas residents. We're not doing it for the money. We want to make sure these children get to and from home and to school safely. That's all we're concerned about, and that's all I'm concerned about. And I want to make sure our children in North Las Vegas are protected and have the best. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you. And we'll return back to you with that information, Steve. Is there any other people that would like to speak? City Council, council, anything else? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.